Okay, we'll call meeting to order for May 20th, 2019, Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners. If you would join me in the pledge allegiance. The flag's hooked around the corner there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First correspondence are bills from Lincoln Park Manor. I have Prior Automatic Fire Sprinkler Incorporated. Invoice number eight, seven, eight, six, seven, nine. These are double. Okay, so one, these are just two invoices in one statement. Eight hundred and sixty dollars for Prior Automatic Fire Sprinkler for work. Material sixty-four dollars, site work seven hundred and twenty-eight, forty-six. Those are all together. And street plumbing, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and five cents. A weekend service call for the three-door cooler compressor not working. Ordered new compressor, replaced the presser, added freon. Total of nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and five cents to street plumbing. And then this is, this is a bill that was brought to us before. Five hundred dollars for pumping the grease trap. I mean, I, it was brought to our attention that, you know, we own it. So if it doesn't get paid, as many other bills are not getting paid by Lincoln Park Manor, that we may have an issue if it builds up and is not flushed out. And I understand that, but I think then they need to pay it. Just a flyer, excuse me, from the extension office. And Department of Commerce, Economics and Statistics Administration. I guess for the upcoming census information. The US Census Bureau invites your government to participate in the 2020 census new construction program. The new construction program provides tribal, state and local governments an opportunity to update the Census Bureau's residential address list of living quarters for which construction is in progress. The new construction program is voluntary. Census Bureau strongly encourages your participation for the following reasons. Federal government allocates over 675 billion in federal funds annually for infrastructure programs. Based on Census Bureau data, participation ensures that your government will gain valuable information that will aid in making decisions about education, health services and housing. Participation helps to ensure an accurate population count for your government. Review the census flyer and sign up and fill out information online. Have you done this in the past? The last census was what, 2010? What meant 2010?
We had to go here.
Tenure. Don, this note about Jerry for the bus, what did that mean?
Oh, I was supposed to ask, who's doing his evaluation for you? Who's doing his evaluation?
I think the bus board needs to give us an evaluation.
Jerry.
Don't you think?
Yeah, they're aboard.
How we could do it, supervising.
Would you please pass it on to the bus board that we would like his evaluation by the middle of June? That gives us the last two weeks. I also spoke with the sheriff and told him that we would like his evaluation by June 1st. Spoke with him a couple of weeks ago. That gives us the month of June to configure our rating system and then the corresponding numerics for the dollar, for the fifty cents that we have, or the twenty-five cents that we have. Minutes from last week. Don, were you able to put together that information that was requested by Mr. Keach, or do you? So we had correspondence, we approved a tax abatement, we took the bid for abandoned cemeteries. And have you heard back from that? At the abandoned cemetery bid to, it was, okay. So that, that stands as motion for Myra Marinigan.
We approved that, right?
We did. She was just gonna make sure that she knew all the-
Well, it was for all of them.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Central Kansas Mental Health came, gave their presentation, we spoke to the treasurer for the quarterly report. Highway Department. Conversation, the Council on Aging presented a new budget. OCCK came, we chose a location for the bike rack that they're going to pour cement up in, or over in the southeast corner, am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Excuse me. Mark Levin is on the repeater board. And then we reviewed the rest of the highway department evaluations. So we finished that department. And we had extended an offer for the human resource position that was declined. So I do not see any changes. Do you have any changes to the minutes, corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 13th, 2019 minutes.
It has been, I'll second. Been moved and seconded, the approval of the minutes, if there's no further discussion, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed. And we still have a few minutes before the Conservation District.
Let me just talk about the Gray thing.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago, we, obviously you all know about the assisted living closing at Lincoln Park Manor. And we discussed, maybe wanted to talk to Mr. Grace here. And I contacted him and he said, well, he just didn't want to come in and just out of the blue and start talking. He wanted a, maybe a letter written to him or an email just stating what we want to discuss, like bullet points. And I witnessed how I talked to Alexis and Eljo now that, thinking that I'm gonna write up like our issues. Like not paying rent, accounts payable. Obviously, the future of where we're at, we got a year from now and at least his runs out. So maybe that's what we would discuss with him. So I'm gonna write up an email or a letter here to, and give to Mr. Grace. And then we'll go from there and then maybe he'll come in and we'll discuss. Because he was saying, we have issues on who pays for what. Like he thinks, at one time, I guess, when he was brought in, he thought the county was gonna supply more beds for, for the Lincoln Park Manor. Then it was the county's responsibility to do that. And I think some commissioners here don't think it is. So we have to talk about stuff like that. Also about who fixes what, we don't have a real definitive, just like we went over here for these bills. We don't have a real definitive line, who pays for what. Like, like we just had this grease trap plugged up, five hundred dollars.
That's not even, that's not even an actual repair, that's just a biannual or semi-annual expense.
Well, we need to define what he pays for and what we pay for. General maintenance, like if the stool is plugged and you get plugged and you hire a plumber to come in and unplug it, that should be maintenance, he should pay for that, we think. Now, if it's broken, a line out there, then we have to pay for it. Stuff like that, but there's a line there, he says, no, it's your responsibility. We say, no, it's your responsibility. And every week we go back and forth on paying these bills. And I would like to talk more, make a clean line, who's pays for what here? So we don't have this misunderstanding every week. That's one thing I'd like to address with him. And other things too, but I wanna do a letter, send it right out to Eljo.
Yeah, just leave a few notes.
So I would talk to, you know, we'll type up and will you guys agree with it, then I'll send it to him or email to him. And then we'll go from there and maybe we can have a visit where we stand with him and Lincoln Park Manor. Okay? That's all I have. They could come in, I think they're up there, John Button.
Hello.
You're welcome.
Come right up here, John. You're on the agenda here.
Am I? Not worth it. Get a front row seat.
Yeah. Hi.
How are you guys doing?
That's John Button, Alexis and Eljo, you know, probably.
Eljo for a little while. This is something we put together for you guys. Nancy found the sunflower on the front, thought that was a good way to show what the Conservation District does. They're across the state and most of these programs, we've done different parts of it. So that's, that's kind of an overview. And then the next page here is things we've done in the last year and some pictures. The poster contest is always a big one at the school for elementary education. We didn't do our field day at the lake this year, the rain rained us out in October. So we, we ended up canceling that. Earth Day. And then our budget is the last page, the page before that list. Kind of things some of you may know. It's more of a, it's more of a written list of what our picture's covered, I would say. Towards the bottom, it shows that we do 70% of county average cost up to a $3,000 landowner limit. And then on terraces, we'll do a 50% rate up to $3,000 limit. Over the past year, we've allocated over 15,000 for construction of waterways, ponds and terraces. And landowners have spent an additional 17,000 to complete these practices. So all of that's money from you guys and from the state that we've kept in the community, yes.
If you, have you ever had a referral, kind of, maybe if we're having a road issue with someone who needs some terraces? And have you had a referral from, like, let's say, our highway department, knowing that this continued wash area is because of some soil erosion, et cetera? Does that happen?
Not necessarily. There are spot checks that come through every year, certain landowners come up. If, if there's an issue or something, then you can come in and say, okay, this is, this is too much erosion, something needs done.
So it's mostly just firsthand?
Yes.
I come in because I want it for my land?
Yes, that's typically how it is. If, if half a dozen neighbors notice that there's a big problem and it's possibly upstream from them, they may come in and complain, but there's a fairly lengthy process through FSA and us in order to-
You can't really make someone participate, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes, yes. If you, if you file a complaint, it's gotta be a formal complaint. And then they go out and determine what needs done and then they can, they can withhold some payments to make it done if it's that bad.
So if you get a complaint then about a well or siren issue or something like that, do you forward that on to the sanitarium then? Is that, is that all interconnected, is what I'm assuming?
Yes.
You guys work with the NRCS, obviously, right?
Yes.
How do they, which is obviously the federal national Department of Agriculture. How do they, you work with them directly, you know, I should know this because I've been involved forever, but. Like I know we have Lincoln Quail Conservation District and then you got the NRCS. And how do you coordinate with them?
We split time with them, Nancy's, Nancy's part-time with them for office rental and stuff. But we always get a report, it's been coming from the guy at Ellsworth, Phil Chenwigan's been giving our NRCS report. But they, they basically file the paperwork, I would say.
That's national?
That's-
So they use serve- You serve as like a site, a branch site or something, is that the concept? If you're employed by them, you are one of theirs?
She's employed by us.
I'm employed by the Conservation District.
But in exchange for office rental, she works for them.
I give them-
Rather than us paying rent for the office space.
So they own the office space or rent it?
They own it, they own.
Okay.
And it's FSA and NRCS.
They rent it, they rent it.
They rent it.
Rather than us paying them rent for her being there, because it's their office. She works for them also.
Okay. But are you considered a location for them? I mean, it's their, they own it, would that be?
Yeah, they have their office also.
Okay. Do they have one in every county?
They're all Department of Agriculture, you know, FSA, half of it, and NRCS, the other half, you know. NRCS, so like if you want to put in CRP or field, obviously you go through them, that's federal. But, but-
They also have cost sharing for terraces.
But if you like, like I fixed a waterway, then that was a state thing, right?
It is the Lincoln County location.
You can do it in-
Now, how do you differentiate between federal? I'm sorry.
You can apply for both, you can get both.
Okay. Cause I just fixed a waterway here a couple of years ago and that was a state money, it helped cost share that. But then you do some other major CRP and it's a federal, and I always wondered, who's in charge of doing what there?
If you can, if you can qualify for the federal money, it's a higher, better money.
Better money. Okay. Who determines that?
That's done at a state level, I believe.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to get in weeds, and I don't want to get in weeds too much on this.
There's a point system.
I was just curious, John, yeah, we're back to your thing here, I'm sorry.
There's a point system that gets you where you're going.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure where I was, but the budget, the budget's on the last page, if that helps we.
Alexis, did you understand that all those government agencies are in my route?
Yeah, it says USDA on the front of the building. Department of Ag, so.
But it's not regional, it's by county. Every county has one, is what I was kinda going for, how big the, you are the location for Lincoln County, each other county has its own, or its own-
For now, anyway.
For now.
Right, I mean, I-
That may be changing.
Right, regionally, I guess.
There's a management unit, which is Ellsworth, Lincoln and Celine. So that's kinda the three counties that we typically work with are those three counties.
Okay.
They trade help in different things.
Gotcha.
On our budget, we're keeping our asking at the same, the 22,000 is what we received a year ago. If you'll notice, since Patty resigned and took a different job, we've, our salaries and wages have dropped. So that changes, kinda changes our bottom line for this year, but next year it comes out and we wouldn't have to transfer, we had to transfer money. It's been pretty slow, there hasn't been a lot of CRP, we haven't had a lot of drill rental. We bought a new blade to try and encourage terrace renovation and we haven't seen a lot of rental with it, but it's been raining quite a bit since we purchased it, so giving people a chance to use it.
Okay, but you are planning on using 7,000 of your cash on hand to put into this proposed budget? Is that what I'm reading? If your cash on hand turnover went from 3,000 to 11,000, you're budgeting in that cash on hand?
Yes.
Where's your transfer fund coming from? That line item that says transfer funds?
Would be our enterprise fund or enterprise, you know, we-
A savings?
Yes.
Yes.
What's in there?
With total of equipment.
So whatever you collect, but you don't budget what your expected income is, or is that already in there?
The receipts are at the bottom there.
I see interest, donations, and what you get from the county and what you get from the state. But there's nothing under, like a, you don't have a budgeted line item for expecting what you've-
No.
Collected in years past? So you, if that transfer of 2,000, what's left in that account if you're taking 2,000 out of it? Do you have like a savings state statement or? Just out of curiosity, what kind of reserves you have?
Yeah, there's, is there 50 in there?
Yeah, probably.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah, I think, but a lot of that, that enterprise, we have to buy seed. Like if people want to plant grass seed, we buy it and then we wait for them to pay us for it.
Yeah, you have to be able to pay upfront.
Yeah, the maintenance of the drills, the maintenance of the blade, that's the-
Or if we decide to buy a new drill or-
Yes. That's, that's in that enterprise fund. This is basically what it takes to operate the district.
So your cash on hand is only what you didn't use from budgeted funds in that budget? Well, I don't have a problem with you asking for the same amount, that's better than asking for more. My only question is if you're budgeting, do you use seven of your cash on hand, what will you do next year? If you're planning on having five rollover?
Did you, you thought the state was gonna maybe match a little? We think the state may match a little bit more.
Their goal is to match more.
Three or four thousand, I would say.
What do you feel like the utilization is in Lincoln County? Is it, are we maxing out our utilization now, or how are we?
We've pretty well used up all of the, we use all of our money.
Do you have people waiting kind of for the next year?
Terrace as well.
Subject systems, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
There's applications on hand waiting for-
Yeah, sometimes it gets turned down to the following year.
That's what I'm wondering, how stacked up we get it.
Because there wasn't enough funds and then the next year they funded it, it was fixing a waterway.
Why does that say, the one thing I read for KSA 2, 1907, if state appropriations are insufficient to match county funds not to exceed 25,000. The state isn't, isn't exceeding 25,000 per district, is that what that means?
Yes.
Well, they're supposed to match up to 25,000 of what you gave us.
Okay.
They have not been doing that.
So I see what we got last year was 17,428 for R22, so. And you're saying you're expecting that their match rate is going to increase, hopefully, is what, okay, I see what you're saying. That would make up the difference for what you need to budget in to stay at the same request from your county fund. Excellent.
Hopefully, the state comes through.
I know. We just had a county commissioner conference and one guy was pretty adamant, he wanted to know where that $6 billion went out of our KDOT funds. Where could it be? It looks pretty thorough to me, thank you.
Thanks, I don't have a second.
I do have papers to sign for chairman, do you want me? We don't do that right away, I hold it until they approve the budget.
For the budget?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you guys, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Nope, that's great, I did not know, yeah, see you guys.
Yeah, thanks.
Bye, thanks. Okay, excuse me. We are actually a little ahead of time. I think we just had maybe a road issue that you'd like to discuss, would you, if I would put Fitchy in now?
I, I can do it, it will take just a few minutes.
Perfect.
As I mentioned earlier before the meeting, the rain we had was three and three-quarter inches in just a couple of hours and flooded the creek down there, washed over one, that's 120th, that's at Besper Road. In nine places south of Fox Drive and four places or five places north. And some of those are gonna require shoulder repair. Not too many of them, but most of them can be repaired with a little greater work, the shoulders washed down a couple of them. Also, on Fox East, East there up toward my place, it's gonna require about three loads of material to fill in, a washing place right at the bridge. When you come off the bridge, it drops down at least six inches.
That's on Fox, you said?
Several years ago, we had a similar situation. And I talked to the commissioners at that time and I was informed that Lincoln County was a war county and they couldn't afford any kind of repair in that area. And I required about some windmill money and they said, well, we can't do that because we're saving that for a rainy day. So today, yesterday, it worked out a couple, three more inches. And I'm afraid the mailman's gonna quit delivering mail up to my place because he really can't drive to the mailbox.
Are you talking about the bridge on the east side of Fox? From 120th, okay, that first bridge, right?
Just east of the cemetery, fairly big bridge, but the water goes around it.
Fox and 120th?
Yeah.
And so that's gonna, that's gonna need some attention, probably after this next two or three inches we're gonna get. It flooded probably at least two foot over that road. I don't know how close that gets to Gordon Krueger's house, but the last time it got within just a few feet of some of the neighbors there. But this time wasn't quite as bad, but the ground's saturated now. Also, down south, soft road issue is getting, is not getting any better. Signage was put in there, but that doesn't fix the road. I don't know where, you know, Road and Bridge Crew's getting their information about how to fix it, but you guys need to give them a little direction on how that is accomplished. You can't fix a road base from the top. That road's gonna have to be worked over, it's just gonna get worse, those places are getting longer. And you take a semi coming over there or a school bus or that don't know the road, they're gonna hit that. It's just like putting on a brake, going downhill and there's gonna be some problems sooner or later. And that signage is not gonna eliminate that. That road needs to be repaired properly from the base up, not from the top down. They gravel, they put gravel on it, they grade it and just like drive it to sand. The gravel's not-
Could you explain a little bit of what you mean by the road base? Because we had this discussion about two, two to three weeks ago in here with the highway department. And I think there was some confusion because the comment was, well, if you want me to fix every road that way. But I, I was suggesting that this region that you're talking about, I've had quite a few phone calls.
When a road gets built, it, it gets a base put on it, it gets ditches graded in and it gets a crown. And then they come over and they pack that down normally with a sheep's foot. And I, I don't think the county owns one, but there's a neighbor, four or five miles down south, has got one, seven inches yard.
We do have one, we have one sheep's foot.
And it is, what they used on my road was a crusher, not a sheep's foot. But that's normally packed really, really well. And then you come on- And then you come on there with some drainage type larger rock and then smaller rock and smaller rock and you build it up to where a heavy load on a heavy truck, it's not gonna sink. Uh, it's very firm. And that's what a road base, that's how it's built.
So do you think that that stretch there, or it's a few miles, I guess, but those intermittent soft spots, do you think that we need to remove that top layer?
Well, that road was pretty good until the county rebuilt it five, six years ago. And evidently, when they rebuilt it, they didn't know about road bases at that time, or they would've put one in. And I think there must be some springs under there too that create moisture that makes it continually soft. And to put a, to put a proper road base in, you have to start at the bottom and build big rock and then smaller rock and smaller rock and tamp each one down as you go. Uh, then there's no problem. Uh, a little spring can kind of bleed off under the big rock and there's no big deal. But that stretch does not have that, there's no big rock under that. I think they just put the dirt up there, put the gravel on it, say that's a road and it, and it was for a while. But there is no underlying hard area.
How big a rock are we talking on the, on the base?
Well, to, if they had done it to begin with, then you're talking rock about that size. And, and, and you put a lot of that in there and then you really squish it down. If it goes down too far, you put more on it, you just do it, keep doing it until the road doesn't sink anymore under a heavy divvy.
Weight.
Like the sheep's foot. Um, and that road doesn't have that. Even, even Fox Drive up toward my place has got a rock in it that began with. So those guys knew how to do that, they just didn't, for some reason, it just didn't happen on that stretch. That can't be repaired without putting that in. And to put that in, it's gonna, that road, to do it correctly, it's gonna have to be closed and dug out and put in, packed down and then rebuilt up. If, if we hit a dry year or two, it'll firm up. But a couple more wet years, it'll get soft again.
Well, and I've noticed we're kinda, we're getting this effect because in the, in the softer spots, we keep running it down with ruts and then grading over top and it just kinda smooshes it wide.
If it's soft on the right-hand side and not on the left-hand side and you hit that, you, I mean instantly your, your vehicle's pulled over. And people drive forty miles an hour on that road, forty, fifty, and there's a lot of semi traffic.
It's a pretty heavily trafficked area.
And, you know, twenty miles an hour is really not uncalled for. And people have to slow down on that or they're just not, somebody's gonna have a bad time. And then they're gonna come to the county. And the county's gonna have to work out a lot of money one way or the other to either fix it or pay somebody off or whatever it takes to, to satisfy the whole situation. You know, on a, on a lightly traveled road, a heavy gravel top would probably be okay. Not on that road. And like I say, up on where I'm at, several inches of rain there, I, like I said, I'm afraid the mailman's gonna quit delivering mail up there. Cause he's gotta drive over rock that big to get to, to get there. So if the county guys would just take a look at that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Yes, thanks for coming in, appreciate that. Okay, our next item on our, we will speak to the highway department when they come in, they're coming later today.
I, I think most of the neighbors wouldn't mind if that road was closed from, uh,
To fix it?
A little survey might be called for to see what they think, but uh, school buses go to that twice a day.
Does the bus go clear south on?
I don't know, I think it goes to the county, I've seen it, it clears out the county line before, but I don't know who picks up the other.
Okay, cause I know they come down to where your road is, I mean, I know that, but I didn't know if there's a, like, south of it. They go, okay. All right, we'll bring that up with the highway department when they come, thank you. The next item.
Need to lean on them just a little, you know, make, make some suggestions on how that could be a but I, I don't think they don't have.
Thank you. Um, we are going to review the hospital budget. So we have a breakdown, we have the Lincoln Medical Clinic, the Sylvan Medical Clinic, and then the actual hospital operating budget. And so I'll just read through some numbers here, um. These aren't combined, are they? Are they, is it just each page? I mean, that's not a combined number, right? Total operating expense for the Lincoln Medical Clinic, one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, five hundred and ninety and seventeen cents.
Where are you reading?
I'm on the first page, I'm just trying to take that paper.
Let me get that out.
I got it, thank you. Um, with a, and with a budgeted loss of nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. And let's see, Sylvan Medical Clinic, operating expense four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars with a budgeted loss, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen fifty. And hospital. I don't understand that one, but this, let's see. Total operating expenses, six million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. With a total expected income of two hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-six cents. And none of those are combined, right? Looks like everything is separated by by location, correct?
Oh yeah, the clinics, what gets me is the clinic, huh? Why does it jump up so much?
Well, from my understanding of speaking with some people, the Lincoln Medical Clinic is budgeting a loss of three hundred or nine, excuse me, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand some change because they hired two new doctors. And from the last, from the hospital board meeting that I attended, they are not expecting the new physicians to take time in the hospital. So this looks like they are budgeting salaries for the physicians completely separate. There's no crossover budget with the salary from the clinic to the hospital. Um, that is a little concerning, there was a question raised at the board meeting, you know, why aren't the clinic doctors taking a shift in the ER to cover a shift? Um, I think that's pretty common practice. I know that Ellsworth does it, I know some, some nurses there. Um, and I believe it was mentioned at the meeting that Beloit does it. And there was a response from our administrator that said something about it being, um, that, that if you do that, then it's a competitive tactic. And it was mentioned as if that's not what we're going for. I don't know what their contract says, you know, they were just hired and I believe it's a contract, so I haven't read that. So I'm not sure that they can be made to take ER shifts, but it does concern me that we're budgeting completely separate salaries for these three entities. Not, there's no carry, you know, there's no carryover between the two to share the expense of the biggest portion, the employee payroll and benefits would be for the physicians and then the mid-levels. I'm not even sure that we have mid-levels that cross over, do we? Between the clinic and the hospital?
I don't know.
There have been some changes there recently that I'm not sure how it has all worked out. Um, I know one of the, I think she's a nurse practitioner, was gone for a little bit and then didn't come back to the clinic, but came back to the hospital from my understanding. So now that person's not at the clinic. Right now, we have one of the doctors on a paid leave.
Yeah.
That I, according to this budget, it looks like that's an expectation to continue paying that salary through the rest of the year.
I think they're supposed to get an answer from the Board of Healing Arts on that situation.
Okay.
When they know that, then they can go forward on what to do.
So then we need to have a couple of questions for Mr. Granzo on the budget. And I would say, my question is, um, why are we budgeting a completely separate line item for salary and wages to each clinic and the hospital? Is there not any expectation for a carryover there between two entities? In, for example, in my mind, it would be the medical clinic in Lincoln with the hospital potentially where a physician would be covering an ER shift or something like that.
You notice Sylvan have a full time?
It's not full time, it's three days.
The doctors go, come, go over there from here and then they have nurses there too, or that or something?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, I think it's three days, I can't remember what days right now, but they have their office hours there.
Well, the last page is capital equipment like, like, uh, hardware for the lab there, chemical analyzer and
Yeah, is that a, is that a purchase price or I'm not sure what those numbers mean?
I suppose it's a three-year.
Like a lease?
I don't know, that's a good question.
Budget assumptions, three percent increase in most areas, three point five percent salary increase. Doctor, added doctors, um, Mr. and Mrs. Chima. And they're expecting a thirty, okay, so they're budgeting for a thirty percent increase revenue in Lincoln Clinic, a fifty percent increase revenue in Sylvan Clinic. And Mr. Chima based out of Lincoln and Mrs. Chima based out of Sylvan. That's what I'm understanding from that note, do you see that one?
Yeah. We other, we other think we're gonna get, with these two new doctors, we're gonna get that much more business, I guess, right?
I, that's what it's, I'm, I'm assuming that's why they're saying they're budgeting an expected percentage increase in revenue.
Hopefully we will.
Well, that'd be nice, but they're bud, it looks like they're budgeting that in. So we're still showing the loss here on the clinic of nearly a million with that, with that expected increased income. And over a quarter of a million in Sylvan. This doesn't have the line item for their cash on hand, does it? I mean, I'm assuming that's how they're expecting to cover some of that loss.
I don't know, we need to ask Mr. Granzo a lot of some of these questions.
Mm-hmm, I think maybe he could come in to discuss the budget.
Maybe next week.
Dawn, would you please request that Mr. Granzo visit with us for a half an hour? If he does not want to come to the evening meeting?
Is that next week?
The evening meeting is next week, but I will say that the sta, the state statute says that we have to return this within ten days, so I think what we're going to do is return it to him after today's meeting. Then he has ten days, or the, I should say the board has ten days to bring it back. And then there's another ten-day process for the completion of it, so it's a thirty-day, um, deliberation. And I think we had it, this is the eighth day. So I think we need to contact him and request that he come to us. And if he, he doesn't wanna come to the evening meeting, that would be fine, I mean, we could just if he, I believe it would satisfy the statute if he responds to us and says he will answer our questions and come to the meeting, does that make sense?
Yeah, that would be.
So Dawn, if he doesn't wanna come on the twenty-eighth, if he does, I think we should schedule him first, if he doesn't, that would be the third, is that what I'm seeing, June third?
Yeah. Oh, you don't have one? I'm sorry, Aljo, I thought everyone had one.
I have an extra one somewhere. Yes. Yeah, you gave me one, but I haven't, I haven't one.
You can have that one, Aljo, I'm sorry. I had one from before. I had one from, uh, the hospital meeting from before. I think I have one in here.
I'm gonna make copies because I don't have one.
Oh, okay, I, mine's already separated. I pulled the
Well, I had one somewhere, I, I saw it though, that's fine, Aljo, you can keep that one. Yeah, that's how to get up for questioning him, I just had some questions, yeah, and then.
Well, and I think we need to ask him while it's in front of us because it's not set up, you know, except for some descriptions.
I have a question on this loss and loss every year. How can we operate like that? Do we have twenty million dollars out there, we just keep chipping away, huh? And I, I don't, no. You know, we can, we don't lose that every other department like that. I mean, I just don't know how to, maybe I'm wrong or stupid here, and I didn't understand that.
No, I have questions about that too. It would be good to see maybe some historical numbers also.
Well, and I have nothing against the hospital before the hospital.
Right.
It's just, I don't
But we want it to be productive and drive, not be slow.
Financial system here. And I've, I'll bring that up tomorrow night too, I don't really and I'll just
Tomorrow night is the hospital board meeting?
Yeah, Tuesday night. Third, third Tuesday, twenty-first.
Twenty-first, at seven or six?
And I'll bring up some of these
Do they change to six-thirty, I think?
I could even talk to him tomorrow night about coming, but we could send out an official.
I think we need to officially contact him according to the statute, but yes, if you've mentioned to him.
I agree. But, uh, I will ask too tomorrow night and, cause this time I'm not objecting to nothing, I'm just wanting to know, I understand this stuff. Seems confusing to me. Anyway, that's all I got.
Okay, Ladonna, uh, we're ready for you. Um, if we need a motion, I mean, we can stop, but
I just wanted to let the board know that I'm gonna be gone next week on vacation, but my girls have everything covered, Monday's a holiday and Lisa will be there Thursday, so they're good without me, but they can always contact me, but Dawn, but just letting you know, I won't be there next week. Um, and then I know Wilson Telephone and went around and did a bid on the IT, whatever they're doing, and Next Tech is going to do that. I'm, I just want you to know as a department head, I'm not unhappy with Next Tech. It's, we have servers and firewalls and all kinds of stuff and
You want to keep Next?
I wanna keep Next Tech. And so I did ask the telephone, the Wilson Telephone guy, if he's gonna submit a bid to you guys to submit it with and without me, because if I have my preference, I do not wanna change for Next Tech. And it's not, it's not the cost, it's somebody that knows our system inside and out and we're not unhappy with that and I don't wanna change. So I would just encourage you before you make whatever decisions you're gonna make, is that you discuss it with the department heads that affect. I know some of the department heads just have a computer, they don't have servers and firewalls and all that stuff that we have. But to me, it's an important part of our business that we do every day and I don't wanna change if I don't have to. I mean
Is that listed out as a separate expense one for their department?
I think it was.
When we pay the, to Next Tech?
We pay out of their fund.
Okay, so you know what your cost is, so we'll be able to look at the bid and
Right, right.
Just to see what the difference is, yeah, if it's minimal. Okay, so you know what your cost is, so we'll be able to look at the bid and just to see what the differences, yeah, if it's minimal, there's no reason to switch you over, but.
Yeah, so I just think that this is a case where it's not necessarily the lowest bid that's the best fit for all of us. And I know there are departments that don't care for Next Tech, and that's fine, I don't, but I don't think that all of us should have to go one way or the other based on another department who doesn't, I would, I don't know, Dawn could answer this maybe that I can't, but I probably one of the bigger departments besides the sheriff's office that has the most equipment, so I don't, I think that somebody that has one or two computers shouldn't be making the decision for the people that have more things, I guess this was my point. So, that's all I wanted to say about that, please don't make a decision without discussing it with whoever it affects. That's my, that's all I have to say today.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
We will keep that in mind. I would like to suggest a recess if you don't mind, until we have eleven o'clock, we'll be our highway department, will that be all right with the board?
Yeah, fine with me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I continue, Sean, you ready?
Yeah, why don't you come see us and take Michael next.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm bringing in my new supervisor.
Hi.
Stromberg. And.
Are you KDHA?
No, um, so I'm, I'm Hannah Stanbauer, I'm the Deputy County Administrator for Celine County.
Oh, okay.
And so I oversee both the sanitary ends for the county, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so this is quarterly for January, February, and March of two thousand nineteen for Lincoln County sanitary and activities. So, uh, we did the pumper trucks, just to briefly kinda go down through it. Uh, truck inspections, which was DJ Environmental, Ready Industries, and we had septic inspections, it's like we had three, two consults, which will end up being, septic systems, the consults are cost share letters that we'll put together, so it's like we ended up with fifteen hours. Septic, one console on the well. And we had some other L N P C meetings. One other, which I believe was, uh, let me give you the year-end report for two thousand eighteen. So, we ended up with a total of thirty-one hours this quarter. Which is, uh, on the low side, but the weather's not cooperating very well. Uh, we've had rain all fall, and then rain is spring, just about the time it dries up, we catch another bunch of rain.
Yeah.
So, I would expect the next quarter to be a little busier, so. Any questions about any of that?
Not about this, um, so when we allocate our line item in our budget for your expense, does that go to Celine County? Or, it, or this is, so he's your employee?
Correct, yes.
But do we write a check to Celine County?
Yes, it's done in January for two thousand nineteen. And, um, we were here last, we talked about this just a little bit, it was a two-year contract, so we really need to have that discussion for the upcoming year.
It was a contract between the counties?
Yes.
Correct.
Have you seen a copy of that?
I, yeah, the, the, the one in, it would've been seventeen, right, two thousand seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Really need to get one for nineteen.
Yes, it would've been seventeen and eighteen, we're just continuing into nineteen because we approved it as part of our budget of eighteen for nineteen, I believe.
Correct.
So now we're working on the budget for twenty.
Right, so when is the, the dates that you, when will you guys finalize your budgets, is that May, April, May, June?
We don't finalize until June.
We need, we need information first to June.
Okay.
We're gonna finalize the end of July, so.
Okay, well, if you guys remember, and two of them are news, they probably didn't have anything to do with it, but what we'll do is we'll come up with a five-year running average, that's how many hours we spent, and then the number of visits. And then, um, we have a flat rate fee for me, and then the mileage, and then we come up with a dollar. And, and that was kinda how we come up with the X dollars minus what we got for fees, uh, is how much we asked for out of the county.
So then are you salaried to Lincoln County or hourly, or to Celine County, excuse me?
He's an hourly employee.
Hourly employee.
Okay, so he's hourly to you, and then you just figure up what your allotted time is, and it's between Lincoln, Celine?
Contract you guys have is with Celine County, it's not with, with me.
I understand, you're their employee, but we're contracting with them so that you can service our area.
Correct.
And where else did you say, 'cause you said there are two of you.
Yeah, we do Ellsworth, Lincoln, Ottawa, and then we almost, of course, do Celine County.
When did that first begin?
Ottawa and Ellsworth is in nineteen ninety-one, and then Lincoln started in nineteen ninety-five, so we've served.
You've been there the whole time?
Uh, no, I started in two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
Uh, Jolene Funk, um, who was my former supervisor, she did that position for thirty-two years. So she would've, it was, it was part of an L E P G grant at the time, that the state uh, trickled down money to the counties to help, uh, start these programs. So each county was required to come up with their own sanitary code in this time lapse, do you remember, Aljo? I think it was from ninety-one to ninety-six, you were given a time, we want you to enforce the sanitary code. And then they, uh, paid at that time, um, Lincoln County funds to help pay for other services, whether you did it yourself or whether you contracted with us. And then, uh, we used to pull that money together, and that's how we started doing the four counties. Cause there wasn't really enough.
No, it's a good region instead of just county, why?
Yes, well.
You're serving as the hub, so to speak, and contracting out for some hours.
Yes, so like it kinda works for both of us because Celine County couldn't handle Celine County with one sanitaryian. But we couldn't justify having two sanitaryians.
One and a half, so you may as well have two full-time and do other areas. Right, what, what other positions are you doing that with?
Um, actually, we are actually just entering into a contract with Dickinson County, and we will be sharing a planning and zoning administrator. That is, uh, we started that just a few months ago, um, it seems to be working out pretty well. And then as far as other contracted services, I don't know, does the health department do anything with?
Um, child, childcare.
Childcare licensing or serving.
They do Ottawa County and the first, I believe, there is some of that overlap between. It just makes it.
You are the emergency manager.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I know there are some other counties that had the emergency manager either shared or doing a dual role. Do you, are you aware of any that you could just give us a quick example?
So, uh, both Ellsworth County and Russell County share an emergency manager, and then out in western Kansas, I know that, uh, is it Cheyenne, Rawlings, and Sherman County share an emergency manager. It's what works best, I guess, particularly for them, but especially in a situation like it is today with it flooding, it certainly makes it difficult to have one person do both counties.
Yeah, yeah, that area.
Counties, it makes it really, really challenging, but if it works for them, it works for them.
When you were the emergency manager in Celine, did you have office, office help, or was it just you?
No, no, I had a, I had a full-time or a sal, another salary employee, uh, my deputy director, and then I had a part-time administrative assistant.
Okay, thanks, I just had, while you're here, I may as well catch you, you're fine.
So, um, why don't I work on pulling up some current numbers? And, um, so June's coming up like a freight train.
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
So, do we wanna schedule something maybe two weeks from now and? Okay, and then, um, do we wanna do that during this meeting, or otherwise, or?
Yeah, probably if you just come in in a Monday, regular board meeting, that would be best. Cause we'll be receiving budgets here over the next few weeks.
Okay, so, um, I'll work on that, and then, help me with the date.
June third, probably.
June third?
Well, that's two, that's two weeks from today, I don't know if we want to do it then. June third or June tenth, yeah.
Is that gonna be too late?
No, no.
Okay.
We'll leave it by July, I mean, we will, we will be starting.
We'll, we'll be planning a special meeting at the end of June, because we need to do a little more deliberation this year and
Okay.
Take some time, so as long as, yeah, I would say the tenth, the latest, third or tenth.
Let's try to do the third, then you got time to mull over what we say.
Do you, is this thirty-one hours, do you think that's reflective of a typical quarter, or is that you think?
I think it's behind because of the weather.
Okay.
Yeah, um, we did a hundred and twenty-four, we were way off last year, um, as far as activities.
More or less?
Less.
Oh, the whole of eighteen is what you mean, but you're gonna go back for five years?
Yes.
So including all of eighteen and then four years prior?
Yes, and so we can get kind of a, a number, um, that would probably be more consistent than last year, last year was kind of, you know, if you were ever to throw out a number, it would be one of, you know, on the low side that you would. But we'll just do the five-year average, kinda like what we did before.
Okay.
And then we'll come up with a number of trips, current mileage, and, um, work our way through that.
Do you have to use your own vehicle, or do you?
I do use my own vehicle, and the county pays me X dollar.
Mileage?
Yes, and so that's.
So do you just keep a vehicle, and you keep a mileage log?
Yes, yep, so when I head out, uh, we have a calendar and we log how we're going to where and why. And then we turn that in for reimbursement to the county.
Are you still a person who does, like, if somebody put in, I say, septic tank out in the farm, and laterals, you come and make sure that's done correctly?
Yep.
Like Jill Funk did years ago, okay.
Yeah, we'll do the sizing of it, we'll have, you know, when they dig the soil profile, they come up with the loading rate. And that's done by the structure and texture of the soil, and it's a factor in the number of bedrooms in home. And then, yes, we come back out to inspect.
Right, right.
And then we also do well permits and water testing, and most fully indoor air quality stuff, mullbried on land.
So now if a farmer drills a new well, do they have to get a permit for it?
Uh, for a livestock well, there is no charge in Lincoln County now.
How about drinking water for humans?
For that, there is a charge for residential wells.
So if it's illegal, then just drill a well for yourself out in the farm and drink the water out of it, without, without getting a permit through you?
It's, it's, it's technically not illegal, we like to permit them, um, we just don't charge for them, that comes out of what the county pays us. So if the homeowner, you know, minus whatever your fees are for your county, is what the county, it costs the county. So if that's something that, Lincoln is the only county that I know of that doesn't charge livestock producers for well permits. If that's something that you wanna change, then we'd have to change that in the sanitary code. That'd take a little work, but if that's something that the commission decide they wanna do, that's something we'd have to look into.
Has that been updated by you?
The?
The sanitary code itself, it's just whatever we came up with originally?
Ninety-six, if, if there was interest in it, then we would form what's called a committee. And you bring like-minded people in to that committee that has interest in it. And then we discuss, um, how our code is, and then the state of Kansas has what's called a model code, or they've been working on for a long time, which is basically, um, things that they would like to see you, uh, put in your code. Um, and then you work your way through, do you guys feel comfortable with that? Cause there's things in there that you might not want, that you say, okay, we're not interested in that, or vice versa. But our code does have to meet or exceed any of the state requirements. So if things have changed in the past few years, then we will have to adopt them, let me update the code. So those are things that you, you wanna have that discussion on before you venture into it.
Do you think that's something that means done?
Um, well, ever, a good code should be reviewed at least over five years, and it hasn't been that way, no, I want, you'd understand, that's a lengthy process, uh, we did Ellsworth, it took three years, because there's a lot of people, you go through a lot of opinions, and then once you're done with it, it has to go to the state, and then all departments at the state have to review it. And if they have comments, concerns, questions, then it's.
To go back and revamp, I, I understand.
Comes back, and it's just a kind of a long, drug-out process, that's kinda why, um, sometimes it doesn't get done. And that's why they were trying to come up with a model code, was to encourage people to cut that, uh, time down um, for the review process, so they have some verbiage that each department is happy with.
Yeah, check, 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 and if you wanna add or delete, you do that, and it's a basic model, I understand. Yeah, it's been almost twenty-five years.
Yeah.
And every county is gonna be different, as well as what it is, their focus is, so.
Yeah, maybe we oughta start that process with you.
Okay.
Later in the year, after our budgets finalize and whatnot.
And then, um, yeah, we could do that, we usually have, um, one county commissioner, somebody with a F S A or R C S office, and we'll have a couple, a district office personnel out of Salma, one from the state will come down. And then, um, we'd have probably one banker, one realtor, some other people when we talk about real estate transactions, then we'll have some water quality people come in, um, either through the Corps or through, um, other organizations that will talk to us.
What do you mean by real estate transaction?
Uh, that's a push, so when, uh, there's a gamut of ways of evaluating septic systems uh, from varying counties, so can, some counties require that every, uh, home have its septic inspected, say, once a year, or once over three years, or once over five years. In general, the consensus of most counties is, let's inspect them when they're selling, as this is a property, a time when they're transferring from property to property.
I see what you're saying.
Let's make sure that, that people buying this property are aware of the condition of the home. So it's very much like doing a home inspection before you buy the home. The home inspection would tell you your roof shot, and your siding's not very good, or vice versa.
Do we have that now in Lincoln County, that you do an inspection? It's optional, is it paid for? Or is it, it's a fee?
Service that we provide, so if somebody.
To the customer, at a fee to the resident, or the?
Right, the fee goes, the buyer would pay for my inspection, and then the seller would pay for the pumping of the tank. Um, and it's kinda equals itself out.
Done.
Well, it would need pumped out for me to inspect it.
Oh, I see, okay.
And so then, that's when we look at it to see if it's cracked.
All of the infrastructure of it.
Right.
Okay.
And make sure it's intact, cause when those tanks fail, you know, they go one way or the other, which is usually back in the house, which causes quite a mess. Um, so we, we do an evaluation on that, and then we, you know, disclose to the homeowner, or and we say this needs to be fixed, there's things that you can get by with, and then other things you can't, so.
Okay.
And that's, that's the way we've done it, and just at the time that we did it in ninety-six, it was just purely gonna be, uh, this is the service that we offered, actually, we weren't doing it in ninety-six, so we started doing it in two thousand and six. So, uh, so we started doing that, so.
I just have two quick questions, the permit that you do, okay, so you don't have to have a permit for the livestock well, at all?
No, we wanna permit it.
Oh, you, you have to permit it?
We wanna permit it, they're not required to have.
It's not required to have a permit for a livestock well, but if you want to do a residential well, the permit is to, is for the depth and the location and?
It's for, uh, us assisting, so like, um, I'm gonna do one at Sylvan, if you wanna go out with me sometime, we'll go. I'll just call you and we'll go, it's, uh, Frederick King, and so they wanna drill a new house well for their house. So I'm gonna go out, I encourage them to have somebody, um, witch the well, you guys are real familiar with that. And find the vein as it runs across your property, and so, um.
Who does that for you?
Well, I have Lloyd Peraskas out of, um, Ellsworth, but there's plenty of gentlemen around here, I think, in Webkey, he's not here today. I think John Webkey does it too. I think John Webkey does it too, and most of the well drillers do it, I do it, I just don't wanna do it, cause if it's not right, I, I feel bad, and so. But what they do is they find a location, and then I measure off to make sure that's in a safe location, so it's far enough away from fuel barrels, far enough away from their septic system, anything else. That, so that's the educational part of it. And then we start to permit, most of the well drillers won't drill a well till you actually give them the start of the permit. And then, once it's drilled, we come back and GPS the well, and they'll set a pump in it, and then we, part of that three-hundred-dollar charge is an eighty-dollar water test. And so, we'll come back and, and test the two, uh, uh, bacterias, coliform and E. coli, and we do nitrates, and then also bac- uh, or, uh, nitrates and corites, I'm sorry. And, and those are the basic health ordinance, we wanna make sure before we permit it that, that everything's fine on the bacteria side, the nitrate, if it's high, we have to tell them that, so they need a reverse osmosis. And chloride is if, um, you were on high blood pressure medicine, or reduce salt diet, cause some of that can affect the way those medicines work, so we wanna notify you ahead of time. And then we'll actually finish the permit.
Okay.
But we'll make, uh, at least two visits to that site, and sometimes a third, because if the-
And it's a three-hundred-dollar flat fee?
Yes.
For them to get your permit?
Right.
Okay.
Now, on the livestock wells that we permit, we'll still go collect the water, that just comes out of the county's time oven, and you guys are getting charged for that.
So, every time someone calls you to permit a livestock well, which-
It's not added, it just comes out of the time that you guys are-
The, the water testing part, and your travel and to be there?
That just comes out of the lump sum of, of trips that you guys have paid, and the lump sum of hours that we were to spend in the county.
And you said that eighty-dollar fee, is that for anyone that wants a water test anytime, or is that just?
That's for a basic water test, but anytime, but we, we can test up to thirteen things, and, um, it's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a full water test.
Okay.
But we usually tailor it, because it's so expensive to issues, so if we have, uh, black staining, that's a manganese, uh, red would be an iron, uh, white would be a sulfate. So, I ask a lot of questions when I go out there, and explain to them, well, why are we doing, wanna test this, you know, do you smell stuff? Rotten egg smell, sulfur smell, um, and some of the manganese, they have a, just like a metal smell to it. And so, you tailor that to what the well needs, and go from there. But we do fluoride, like, for your children, you know, when they're babies and their teeth are developing, you'd wanna know what the fluoride level is. Um, cause if it doesn't have enough, you can just simply put droplets in there, we had to do that at my house with my kids. Um, you put a droplet in their juice, and it helps make sure they're an able, um, matures and wells, so.
Well, you answered my other question, so, what the price, thank you.
Alright, um, I'll work on this, and we'll just plan on getting back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay.
Alright. See you guys.
Bye.
Do your show.
Okay, Michael and Tanner, if you're ready?
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, how you doing?
Just fine.
Good.
How are you?
Doing fine. Total, oops.
Thank you.
Total cost on Bridge One-O-Five, and this is the bridge that we built. With our forces, and we did do, contracted the pile to be driven. Tanner and I ran some numbers this morning, and we came up with roughly a forty-thousand-dollar savings versus what a contractor would charge to build the exact same bridge.
That's awesome.
I thought the price came in very good for the most part there, so.
I'm gonna read it for those who don't have it, we have, um, total labor cost, two-hundred-and-thirty-two hours, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-thirty-two and a half hours. Uh, four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty dollars and some change, material coming in at forty-eight-thousand-eighty-eight dollars, and contracted portion of the bridge at fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. So, the total project cost was sixty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars and forty-two cents. And that's the Bridge One-O-Five, just west of town, here.
And I did a little bit of work on this job description that I was asked for.
That contracted portion to L and M, is the material that they, when they did the piling, is that in our material cost, or is that in their contracted cost?
We bought the material that they drove.
So, that's in our material, so that's just their aim?
That's just labor, yeah, that's strictly labor to put it in the ground.
Did you change this, or is this?
There's a little bit of changing, I didn't have to do too much to that one. It was a, it started for you guys to look at.
Okay. Did you send this in a PDF back to Don?
I have not, yeah.
Would you please do that, because then we have the ability to reprint it and edit it. Don, if, when you get that, would you forward that to me, please? Do you wanna discuss what your major changes were?
Um, not really too much to do, um. Can you remember what I all changed, not to tell you the truth? There wasn't much.
Is that thunder?
Yes.
Oh, my word.
Thunder, and it'd be lightning for a long time.
Guess so.
Moving in. Hey, you said, uh, back to this bridge, Mike?
Yes, sir.
You could save money, if you did it, or whatever, differently, or something?
He's saying this was the cost that we put into it, and if we had just contracted the whole project, it would've been forty thousand more.
Approximately forty, about what, a hundred and four thousand to a hundred and seven thousand?
Yeah, right, right over there, a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand.
So, we saved forty by doing it.
Yeah.
So, we're doing it at seventy percent of the cost, uh, just about?
Contractor, you could go higher now.
Right.
I, I believe that we can get our own labor cost down on that, too.
Time, the time?
Yes.
We had two-hundred-and-thirty-two total man-hours?
Yeah, you know, this is the first one these guys have built together, so, I think that will come down tremendously, and then I think if we, uh, eventually get to where we can drive our pile ourselves, I think that, over time, will bring our cost down.
If you edit out the timeframe where was the weather, you know, we weren't working on it, how long do you think the total project took? A month? I mean, where are we on, two months? Cause I know you're not working on it every day, I know it's not eight or ten hours every day.
I mean, we would be if the weather was conducive, you know, I, I think hypothetically, easily, three wo- weeks might be an exaggeration on it, if the weather all cooperated. I think we-
So, you think it could've been done within the timeframe of a month?
Easily, yes, yeah. You know, and, and I would love to be able to get to the point where we could budget and have a money-
Six a year, yeah.
You know?
That's what we need to do.
Three to four anyways, you know, I, I don't know if we could get six done based on how Mother Nature likes to. But there's some years that you might be able to get that many done.
How long was that bridge?
Uh, twenty-six feet.
Oh, pretty big, long one.
Yeah. Just spanning, inside of the butt met, inside of the butt met. So, the beams are a little bit longer, so they could sit over the pier caps, but span to span was twenty-six foot.
Okay.
And then who did the dirt work to finish up?
We do it ourselves.
But I mean, this crew, or did you have the blade from that area?
Uh, on the road surface, the blade guy will come through and do a final dress-up on it usually.
But who, who prepped the banks and did that kind of work around the edges?
In the channel, it was our bridge crew.
Okay.
Yeah, our bridge crew will do all the channel work unless it's, uh, in the ditch for, ditch or road top, the blade operator can do some finish work there.
And when did we start this project, that was at the end of last year?
Yeah, was it October, maybe?
Yeah.
I don't even, I'd have to go back and remember the thing yet. Yeah, I think, yeah. And when we get some nicer weather, we're gonna go do some, uh, visual inspections on some stonework that we need to look at seeing about doing some tuckpointing.
I think Bob had started a list, didn't he, did he give that to you?
Yeah, we have some of that, and then we've started a, an additional list here.
Yeah, we took our-
On the actual bridge side structures. Some of what Bob done were the smaller than bridge side structures, so.
We took our bridge list and went to the maintenance list, and anywhere our inspector noted, you know, tuckpointing or stone mason, or stone missing, I highlighted those.
Okay.
Um, there's actually nine of them.
Nine?
So, we're gonna go and try to evaluate those, to maybe prioritize.
Can we put them into the mobile three-one-one program to, I mean, it would basically show us where the concentration of areas are?
Yeah, it can be put in there.
And these are all over twenty feet, bridge?
Yes, these are actual bridge structures, you know, I, I think they hit a higher priority than, uh, our culvert-sized ones.
Mm-hmm, how, how many of them do you think need actual stone versus just tuckpointing?
I think-
You know what I'm saying, like, to actually bring in some replacement?
Yes, like, this one is replace flowing stones.
And flow lines, we won't replace stones at the flow line.
While the water's up, I know.
Well, but once the water goes down, we'll pour like, uh, false footing with concrete, and we'll rebuild it for the length and instead of-
I do wanna talk to a mason about that, though, because I think there are some issues, just like we're having with the steps out front. You know, I don't know how familiar you are with the specs for the mortar that you use with the limestone, but I've learned a little bit about it recently, I'm just part of the, an historical res- preservation project, and you, the, with the limestone, you want the mortar to be, you want the mortar to deteriorate first.
Right.
So, I don't know about pouring, uh, pouring up against the structure, and then having that not deteriorate, and then letting the internal portion against the limestone, the limestone itself deteriorate, so you want the mortar to be softer and more porous than the limestone.
Right, cause you want the mortar to fail.
And not the limestone.
Yeah, right.
So, how does that compute with packing or patching with, you know, concrete against the limestone?
It'd be like a footing, we'd be totally encasing it, so, it would be a, more of like a footing structure than a patch repair that needs to fail.
Yeah, so he's not gonna go and, he's just gonna put a footing down by where the flow is, so you may get some undermining or something. He poured the concrete footing, so you're not gonna get undermining of the stone, so that's typically gonna have water that's flowing, you know, around it, above it. Um, but they would actually go and put the, the grout or the mortar, he would actually put cement up, up here, it's just down the flow line, where the cement would be, right?
But my concern is, as the water rises, you have this footing poured, but when the water rises above it, you're seeping back down into the stone, which then causes, you know, it's and the wicking, there's a wicking issue with limestone, too, it wicks moisture up out of the ground, so would it not be a better solution to re-stone it, at, at the, you know, at the baseline where that water is flowing? For longevity issue, is what I'm getting at.
I don't know how we deal with stream bed degradation without doing a deeper footing when we do that, cause that's part of the issue, is the degradation of the streamline over the years.
I know, but a lot of these bridges have lasted eighty, ninety years, so there's gotta be something to it. I mean, they weren't just built, so now that we're needing to address them, there has to be another fifty-year solution, not a five-year patch.
So, you wanna replace the stones, so be removing the stones and then supporting the structure, and then putting new stones in.
I'd hope it wouldn't need support, I mean, I, well, some, if they're that deteriorated that they need supported while you're working on them, that's a little scary, but I-
If you go and you take them all out, well, obviously, you're gonna have to support it, so you probably take one out, replace it, take the other, replace it.
And I'm not a stone mason, but like I said, I've learned a little more here recently, and it seems like there's a way to do that, you know, that we can preserve also the historical integrity of them without just continually patching with concrete until we get the whole thing, you know, coated over. And that's a question for someone, when you get a location where you know there are four or five that they can do in a vicinity where their travel time is minimal between them, you know, and they already have the equipment and material, local.
Yes, we, I was looking back, um, and I pulled a spec from one of our recent jobs, it was in Barton County, we actually bid out to, um, replace, do a tuckpoint job. And it came back really high, and the county didn't have money for it, but then, so they ended up going an alternative route. But I could, I mean, yeah, I mean, reference that project and look back and see what they-
I know that I, a typical tuckpoint on a limestone, just like your flat wall, so this wouldn't take into consideration any of the things that you may encounter with the arches and, you know, moving dirt to get to your wing walls, et cetera. But it's typically around eleven, twelve dollars a square foot, is what I'm seeing for bids on the tuckpointing. Now, when it comes to replacing, I don't, I don't know, I can't give you a, a number on that.
Right, cause you'd have to bring a rock in or stone, so that's gonna cost more, right?
And the labor, you know, would be higher then for that portion of the, but I think just the tuckpointing, I think we can look at that roundabout cost.
Okay.
Per square foot.
How much money do we have, do we have a budget for this, or?
That's a question for my-
Kind of prioritize them, send them out, all out for bid, and say, okay, we're gonna do one, two, and three?
I think we need to see them on the map and see where we have three close together, because I don't feel like there's a point in getting one done. If you have three that are in a proximity where this person knows that they're going to bid on three, they're going to work in that area, they can bring their equipment to that area, they're going to the same job site all the time. I don't think we want to do one over here and one on this end of the county, and that, you know, pick, pick your top ones that need done, see if any of them are relatively close to one another. And then I think we could bid out like a small package of them, I don't think we need to bid them all out, that'd probably be a waste of our time, we don't have the budget for that anyhow. And if it ends up being one bridge is the worst, and it needs the attention first, then I guess we have to make that decision, but there also, I would also take into consideration the culverts, because if you have one big bridge that really needs done, and you have three or four culverts around it on those intersecting roads, while that person is in that area, we may just fix that area, then you're not going back to that area for years, you know? That's my thought anyhow, do you have some input?
No, no, it sounds fine, do you do that now, kinda, don't you, if you're up by Hunter, don't you fix a bridge or something? And you had a culvert close by, a smaller little creek, do you try to do two, or one, or two, or three at the same point?
Try to get everything we can in the area.
Yeah, because if you do one at Hunter, then you go to Westfall and do one, and then you go to Barton one, and what, like Wilson do, and you're out here all over the place. She's got a good point, if you could do it, it may not always be practical to do it that way, right? You gotta kinda-
Well, emergencies happen, but given that as a special circumstance, the plan should be to stay in certain, certain vicinity.
Yeah, you're legit, you got all your equipment there, your stuff there, I agree, if you're there, if you can do it that way.
And it's sa- I mean, it saves for prep work, too, because this, if we're bidding out to a mason, we're not necessarily asking them to remove all the dirt that needs removed. We may need to send our crew to those three or four locations, clean out around the wing walls, cut those trees, get everything trimmed back and prepped. Then that person comes in and does their portion of the work, so that's county time and money and location changes for equipment, et cetera, et cetera.
Last time you were here, too, we were talking a little bit maybe about doing low-water crossings, trying to do short stuff cheaper, like low-water crossings, if possible. And maybe putting concrete in the bottom or something, I don't know if that could wash, in other words, have you looked into that anymore, and trying to come up with some? Uh, and we talked about the railroad cars, Michael, about Alexis and I went down to a conference, uh, where some of these counties used by these railroad cars cut in half, and they're real, and they use them as a bridge. Uh, and Mike, you said, yeah, the culvert type, and, uh, so, you know, if we can, like, we've had farmers coming here primarily wanting- And, uh, so, you know, if we can, like, we've had farmers coming here primarily wanting, you know, uh, stuff fixed. And I know we have a lot of stuff going on and we don't have a lot of money. So, if we could, if we could do something a little cheaper like that, have it accommodate some of these guys, if we can do it that way, you know?
Yes, like low water crossing, um, they've got vented fords and unvented fords. So, an unvented ford is if you're, um, it doesn't have a pipe. So, like, every time it rains, water's gonna go, all of it's gonna go over, but typically the stream's dry. Um, then you have your vented ford, so you could maybe size a pipe for, um, just the standard flows. So, if it flows a little bit during the course of the year, every time it rains, it would go over.
Yeah.
Um, we have designed some of these. Um, usually if we do a full blown design, we, you know, probably put some pipes in, do a concrete top, concrete side. Um, sometimes you'll get some undermining, so we'll go and drive some piling or sheet piling down and then tie a headwall into it just to make it.
Well, I was talking too about actually using them as bridges, the flat cars. Have you heard of the flat cars, of a train flat car being used as an actual bridge?
To span the portion where the.
Yeah, they do that up in Iowa.
Well, they've done it down here in Ottawa County, they're gonna do it. We talked to the commissioner and Mitchell County's gonna do one. And, you know, you could get one of them for eighteen grand, they say, and just put that over there and seal it in there for a small area.
A flat railroad car?
Yeah, and I got his website that I could give you guys to show you where they buy them from, a place.
I think you guys talked about that, it was the same.
Yeah, you know, but, you know, if we could do that, it's.
Usually as opposed to a box car.
Well, I know you're talking about those big circular, uh, railroads, which are using for culverts, right? I'm talking actually, they have flat cars, they actually use them as a bridge. They cut them like in half. They're super thick, like two inch steel.
What are they putting them on? Pouring a concrete base?
Yeah, yeah, or they're probably concrete on the edges of the creek, on the edges of the creek, and then they use that actually as a bridge. I can show you examples on there. I'm not an expert on it, so I may be not sounding like I'm very smart on this stuff, but. But David, Ottawa County, I talked to Mitchell County Commissioner, they're gonna do one with Ottawa County and, uh, on this same issue and. You know, that'd weigh at eighteen grand and, you know, it's cheaper than if we do fifty grand.
How long are they?
Well, I don't know, that's, I can show you. I can show you and I'll send you guys the, Michael, I'll send you the webpage. And, I mean, just some ways to, we can help do some stuff a little cheaper, maybe, and accommodate more people. And I'm, I know some places you can't, you gotta do your regular bridge.
Well, and we have two levels of problems. One, uh, one would be our residential road, high traffic areas that need bridges replaced for the purpose of safety and handling that much traffic. Then you have your weight issues with your ag hauling and those may not ever be used by your general public, but people still wanna be able to transport their grain.
Yeah, ninety thousand pounds of a full grain trailer. Then you gotta have a serious bridge, we know that.
Yeah.
But, but you got some dirt road out here that two people use out in you know where, we all have them way up and and you could have a low water crossing, so this guy can get these five acres over there instead of driving around.
Use it today.
Instead of driving around the section, if you could put that in, you know, kind of sense accommodation for it, all I'm looking for. If we can do that, that's good. Uh, and that we're helping our people and trying to save money. Obviously, some places you can't do that, you gotta do the full tilt, full meal deal bridge, you know?
Right, it's like the major collector routes, so the county's got major collector, minor collectors and local.
Right, you know.
Major collectors, we probably need to put a bridge back.
Exactly.
Minor collector, local roads.
And I'm not against any of that, you know?
Well, those are some of the things we can do, like they've just done the one at five, I mean.
Yeah, anyway, that's all and, and you, you, we kinda talked to you a couple of weeks ago about looking into that, all, all the options there.
Yeah, so we, we started a tool, um, it's not, it's not finished, it's kinda draft form. Um, it show up list kinda some different options for a structure replacement type.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a spreadsheet and it's got different tabs on the bottom.
Yeah.
And so, you know, first tab kinda description of what the structure is and, uh, the next tabs, you enter in some information, like maybe drainage area, um, how far the channel is from the roadway down to the bottom of the channel, some of that information. And then the last top, last tab, tab, it's got all the structures listed and kind of an X by which ones you could maybe.
Options.
Yeah, so if like the ADT is less than thirty, then, you know, you can maybe do a low water crossing, something like that.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, so, so we're working on it, uh, I gotta send it to Mike.
Okay.
But you got it started.
Yes, it started and we're getting close. We're, we're just got some fine details before we give it to you guys.
And I know that's not an overnight project and I think we have, in our county, we have an exorbitant amount of bridges, number one, or culverts, whatever you wanna call them. And I think a lot of the issue is we've been taking everything as we see it in the moment. There needs to be a longevity plan for us, or we're not gonna get very far. Because we cannot keep up with just doing everything as it comes to us, that's not even an option. There's too much coming down the pipe.
Planning five or six bridges every year, yep.
So, that no matter who is looking at this area, there's, there's a plan in place. It doesn't mean you don't change it. But there has to be some sort of a plan of attack, so to speak.
Yep.
Here's, uh, one of those Tanner.
Yeah. Okay. I put, it'd be two side by side and I wonder if, I don't wanna drain the load rating on it.
Well, that's just it.
So, we could, we, I think we could.
Yeah, how do you figure that?
But Mitchell County was, I don't, I was gonna say sometime when they were gonna put.
Do they have their own engineer?
I don't know, but I've. But I was going to, uh, this, I was gonna talk to this one commissioner, whether they're just gonna, they're gonna do it here in a month or two. And I told him when they planned to do it, get over me and maybe I'll get over to you guys and we'll go out and watch how they do that, huh?
That's a good idea.
That way you can just see what's going on.
Good idea.
You know, and I'm not saying it's a, what we need to do, but it's another option possibly, you know?
Right, right.
If, if, yeah, he said eighteen thousand for that. Well, that's a lot cheaper than, uh, what we're doing.
Doing our beams, yeah.
You could use that webpage there, find out or.
Right, Row Wood Yard.
Stillwater, Oklahoma. And they told me, I talked to these other commissioners, they do that stuff quite often.
Right, right.
Right around here, Mitchell and, I think it's even Celine County.
Yeah.
So, anyway, just another thing for you to consider.
Right, yeah, we could, you know, I could call Row Wood Yard and get some measurements and.
Yeah.
I'm sure they've got two big beams that run kinda down it and they got a deck on top. We could figure out kinda.
And you could talk to Mitchell County, uh, how they're doing and they could probably help you. They said they helped me, the commissioner said, yeah, come on up and we'll show you what we're doing.
I wonder if we could drive some pile and put a pile cap and then set those on those caps and weld them to them or something.
Anyway, yeah.
They can, if you can get two matching cars, it makes a big difference. Sometimes they don't match and then you have to have.
Yeah, you'd have to work out the details and I'm not trying to get in the weeds on the details there, but that's just another option that we can look at.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I know some, some other counties, they do concrete beams, like a precast beam.
Yeah.
They'll just build abutments and bring in these concrete beams and set them in place. They're kinda expensive, in my opinion, but, um, they'll set those in place, but pretty much you're doing the same thing, but you're putting a railroad car in place, so I think.
That thing is like two inch steel, so it's heavy duty.
They'll have a deck on top of that, on top of their concrete beams?
No, the concrete beam actually acts as a superstructure and also the deck.
Yeah.
Oh.
Um, so the, the beams.
You just put dirt over top of it?
Um, easily just none, yeah, just leave it exposed. They're like usually two and a half foot wide. Set them in place and usually grout the seams and then you just can drive right on it. They come from up in Nebraska.
But they're perpendicular to the travel. Is that true?
They travel.
Yeah, so you build your abutments and then you just put these in place. Really quick. Some counties, if it's a high volume road or, we need something quick, okay, we can do.
But what's the life expectancy on them?
They're concrete, so they're, they're longer than steel. They're. They're a little bit more than a steel beam structure.
You're gonna pay for them.
Lot more. But they're gonna last a little longer.
Well, some of these shorter spans that we have, that may be a solution for something that's completely defunct and.
Right.
And it's faster, like you said.
Right.
You know, sometimes if you have to spend the money to get it done, then.
Oden Enterprises is the name of that company, but we've done quite a few of those for some other counties.
Is that in your spreadsheet of options?
Um, there's a, yes, there's a precast beam, so they make them there, they precast them and they ship them here. Um, so if you, if you cast it inside, it's called cast in place beams, these ones are actually precast and the company actually supplies a load rating with them to show that they can meet all the Kansas legal load trucks and all that stuff.
So, is that something that from that point on, we, our own bridge crew can set and? I mean, is that, they get delivered and we do the rest, or?
We'd have to lease a crane or contract.
To split them in place.
It's probably something our guys could do. You know, I don't, if we're swinging into place, I guess at the end of the day, I don't know. Well, I guess cost is gonna be the main thing. I don't know how much time.
To have them ordered and delivered, you mean?
Well, yeah, just the cost of them in general versus us setting beams and then putting a steel deck on it.
But it's also a matter of our lack of manpower resources to be doing two projects at once. We can't. So, if you can do that project in two weeks and move on to the next project, you have to look at the time and cost factor too. I mean, it may be better to pay one and a half times to get it done now than to sit on it for three months, 'cause you're waiting for the weather and it's not getting done and then you didn't work on the second project anyhow because of all the interruptions. If you get that one done, then you're all of a sudden on the second project in that same timeframe. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, and no, I mean. If we could be doing it with steel, we could be doing it with concrete at the same time. It's just, it's gonna come down to cost, that's really what it is. You know, and it will save a little bit of time, but, you know, you still gotta weld those together and then you gotta come back in and grout them in and everything else. I mean, it's not like you just swing them in and you walk away, so.
And we, I could look back at some previous projects and give you some costs.
You know, I've seen those used more often on, you know, like asphalted roads and larger span bridges than, you know, a twenty, twenty-five footer, I guess. But, yeah, it's definitely something we can look into.
Yeah, so that spreadsheet's got low water crossing, it's got these, um, it's got a steel beam structure. Um, it's got like pipes, like, you know, pipe, railroad tankers. And it's got some bigger structures, like the one eighty-seven we did was a reinforced concrete hump slab. There's the bigger structures. Um, so we've got a couple of those in there also. Um, I don't have the flat cars in there yet, so that's something I could look in and add.
Mm-hmm, that'd be, that'd be good.
Something to work into.
Well, it gives us a platform to make decisions, you know, and prioritize. You, then you can look at the time, cost factor and prioritize by location. And the ADT and, and the functionality of that bridge and how many people it supports.
Okay.
Thank you for working on that. I know that's not easy and.
Right, it's.
You can start your own consultation. You can start your own consultation.
Yeah, we're getting there. We're trying to be efficient with it, you know, we don't wanna just.
Right.
Make things, yeah, yep. So, we're kinda working it in as, yep, as time goes.
That's great.
Try to get, trying to get some over Michael, let him kinda comment on it and then we can maybe send to you guys, let you guys look at it. What about this? Oh, I didn't think about that, I kinda, so.
Anything else, Michael?
Yeah, I got a couple of things, um. The D six dozer's in the shop. They hope to have it done within two weeks here. Um. Our Kamatsu dozer, we are taking it to Topeka today. We got some issues with it, so we're down to no dozer at the moment. But they should be able to get it in right away this week and hopefully get it kicked out. They were supposed to order parts last week and hopefully they're the right ones, so. Hopefully we'll get it back, but with perfect time to go down, if you can say such a thing with the rain, we wouldn't be able to.
Who transports it?
Our truck drivers. We have a low boy trailer.
You haul it down yourself?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any idea what's wrong with it?
Uh, rear main seal, uh, leaking into the bell housing and there's a sensor in that bell housing. And when the flywheel's going around, it slings a well and then that sensor in return thinks there's another issue, so it derates your engine and everything, so it's just a.
Yeah, okay, you need to fix that by the way.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And also with the flooding and whatnot, or I can't say flooding, we do have a little bit of flooding up in the Barnard area. Um, if things go like they're predicting, even with Celine River, we're gonna be having some flooding down in the Beverly area possibly. Um, we'll probably get some sand pre-staged down in the Beverly area for sandbags there. Um, we do currently have some sand pre-staged in the Barnard area if we need to do any sandbagging there, so.
Where about that three hundredth and, uh, iron, probably in right in there?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a flat area.
It's there.
I know, river comes out, I think.
Yeah, from about Beverly over to the Canada line, it can go underwater, but, uh.
Okay.
There's usually one or two houses that get close there. Uh, since I've been here, we haven't really had any real problems with it. Um, but we like to be ready with that.
Okay.
I think our main concern in the Barnard area would potentially be if it got high enough to overtop the dike there on section lined roads, so we got material ready for that if it need be. Other than that, that's all I have this week.
Okay, so back to one twentieth. Um, we just had a conversation earlier today and some of that area, we need to decide what we're going to do with it. And then another issue that was brought to our attention is on Fox, the bridge just on the east side of one twentieth. Right there by the cemetery.
Okay.
It has been washing over because of the rain, so I, I haven't been there, so I can't tell you my opinion, but, I mean, you'll have to do some assessing and see what you think needs done. But we've kinda been talking for quite a few months now about this one twentieth road and, I mean, it's in my district. I think it's a high priority, it's highly traveled. There are some issues that we're capable of fixing ourselves. It's all about timing and I, you know, I know the weather is a factor right now, but that doesn't mean we can't have a plan in place. And I'm gonna go back to the discussion we had about fixing the road base, because that was reiterated this morning. Um, I guess it's assumed that maybe there wasn't really a proper base in that, I'm gonna say, last section of the road. I don't know if that was built later than the other or just done differently or. I'm not sure. But we can't continue to let that erosion happen, you know, it's kind of gonna, it's gonna turn into a dire situation rather than just needing patched up, which is kind of what we've just been doing, is putting Band-Aids on it. So, did you have any further suggestions about what you think needs to be done?
As far as erosion, are you talking about the soft spots in the hills down south?
Yes, yes, specifically that, I think.
No, not really.
Well, we've, well, we've done some other spots where they're soft like that. Um, we just had one in Marion County at a wind farm. Um, we had the wind farm take out all the soft stuff and they put some larger rock down, I think they put a foot of it. Um, they took up all the bad dirt, put down like a foot or a foot and a half. Pretty much they, they dug down and we tried to find something solid. And if they're digging and, I was scared they're just gonna chase that bad stuff forever. But we did find some solid stuff, so they put some larger rock down. And on top of that, we put like a, like a filter fabric. Um, so it's just pretty much a fabric that allows water to go through, but it keeps the dirt from getting into the bigger rock.
Hmm.
And then we put six inches of like an AB three base material on top of that and then sand on top of the surface. So, that's what we did in that spot and it seems to be holding up, um.
So, then if the rocks shift underneath at all, you're not getting that, the funnel effect of the top surface material funneling down into the space that's created.
And you got that fabric in there, so it keeps that base material from going.
What did you pack it with?
What did we pack it with? Oh, they had some smooth roll drums out there, so they, the six inches, I think they did two, three and flips when we packed it. Um, but I think they just had us, whatever the wind farm had handy.
Like a sheep's foot?
Yeah, I think they just had some smooth, you could probably use sheep's foot.
But how big was the rock that base you put down? About like softball size?
Yeah, I think it was, you know, eight inches.
That created more of a stability of, on that base you already had, and then that creates a base and go up with that filter stuff. Well, that sounds almost like a pretty good deal we should do here, maybe, huh?
That's what we did there, um.
Would you only do it and it was, would you take out like a, where, you know, there's like a quarter of a mile there where you have two or three places?
A quarter.
I mean, what, I mean.
Not the whole stretch, but two, two section off that area.
Well, well, where, what it is, I think there's springs under there and that gets really spongy and it's, and I keep this one individual said here about, you hit that and there's like sandy now, it's over that we put in rock and stuff. So, you hit that and it really like slows you down if you're coming from the south going north.
And then you get the ripple thing going and then.
So, there's maybe only two, you'd only have to fix those areas that are spongy bad, is that right? What you thinking of?
Yeah, you could, yeah. Have we tried to go out there and just remove that material and put some base material in on them?
No, we have not. Is that your question?
Well, like, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Like what you just said with Marion County, that sounds kind of what we've been hearing other people state, maybe we need a new base like that and then build up on it.
Right, 'cause they, it started getting spongy, so they hauled some, the AB three, that base material on it and it kept, it kept falling in, so it's like. It kept falling in, so it's like, okay, we gotta get deeper. So that's why we ended up disposing those holes really. So that's why I asked, I didn't know if you guys had tried to put some stuff on it.
I don't know.
I assume if you put stuff on it, it's just.
Anything that's been done has all been surface topical.
Okay.
And the issue is underneath, because you can just tell by the way that it's rolling and, and making the divots. And then when you put stuff on, like you're saying, it presses down and it's either filtering through the cracks or it's smushing out to the sides and then falling off into the ditch.
Cause you have springs running out there, that water's soft, makes that soft and sucking down that dirt, loose dirt's gonna get sucked down in there. So really, I like that filter stuff you said, that keeps it from falling down through there, right? That's probably a good idea.
That last, with the weight and jagged rock, will it end up tearing and filter it through or?
You can get some heavy duty stuff, I'd have to look back to see what they used.
Well, you know what, we could try, send us try one, one of those spongy areas, try one, see if that helps. See if that fixes it, then we can do some more like that. If it doesn't help, well, then we're only out one deal, right?
Then they also make the geosynthetic fabric stuff, it's not, rock can still get through it. It's like mats, and so pretty much if you put pressure on an area, it spreads it out over a larger area.
Like a stabilization mechanism?
Geosynthetic.
Well, they're, they're mats, plastic mats.
Yeah.
Honeycomb mats, I've seen those before.
So we could even.
They lock together.
I don't even know that that is as much of the necessity, rather than just getting down to the base and seeing what's there.
Right.
I mean, we could have a bunch of big rocks that are just all spread out and they're mushing around, or we could have no base at all, I don't know, obviously, no one here knows.
Pretty sure it's limestone ledges under there.
Dig down, you see.
Probably that limestone, yeah, from, that's those limestone hills up in there. But then you could put them rock on top of that limestone, probably, right, make a tougher, stronger base, hopefully.
This is a road that goes completely the whole way through to the interstate, so, you know, I mean, if it's going to happen, I. Rather than do one section, I believe we need to just block off that stretch, however many miles that is, and say, you know, it's gonna be out for a month. And we're gonna, you would chart out and ma- map and mark flag the areas that need dug up. And then come in one after the other, as the next one's being dug, you bring the base material in for one and pack it as the next one's being, you know. Kind of a, assembly line it down as you go, and that's my suggestion. I don't, I don't know that we wanna spend time doing one. And then go back.
Well, there is either suggesting one.
I know, to see if it works. I know.
Cause if it, if it one doesn't work, what do you wanna do?
Well, we may not, I thought you were referring to the me- mesh material, I mean, we obviously need to put some base material in there regardless. The mesh is a plus or an extra expense or help, I don't know.
Yeah, the mesh just keeps the AB three from working down into, yeah, from working down into the bigger rock.
Yeah, like a filter there, you know, like a. Whatever, I don't know what to do, I mean, what, uh, how, how far would you, how far is that area that needs fixed?
Uh, from everything I've been told, I mean, and I've driven, not, not in the past couple of weeks at all, but, so here's Fox.
Colt and, uh.
Yeah, but it's basically, I mean, there's a stretch just through here that.
Right down here, Colt.
Yeah, here especially.
There's a windmill there.
Yeah, just north of those windmill entrance.
Right, there's Colt, right, there's Colt.
Almost a half mile strip.
One twentieth, so it'd be right here.
What's the cost of, you know, what, the wind farm would take there?
No, they pretty much just did it, they had a bunch of that material on site.
The county did it?
Uh, the, well. Well, we had a road maintenance agreement, so they were actually doing all the maintenance on the roads, um, so this was a maintenance issue on the roads, so they're responsible for it. So that's what they're, they had a bunch of rock and fabric and all kinds of stuff on site.
Are we gonna be affected on this portion of the repower? No?
Their entrances on the other side, south of.
Okay.
Issue we have.
Yeah, but they are gonna be using county roads to get their stuff in.
Well, I would like to see that kind of on paper, what we're gonna plan to do there, because something needs to be done. I get phone calls on that regularly. There was a guy that got stuck just south of, he was, he's in that area, just on the west side of the road. Um, it's definitely becoming an issue. And that whole road, the entire length of it up to eighteen. Um, needs some constructive criticism from the supervision on the operator. If, you know what I'm saying, there's some issues with the crown and just. How the, how the entrances are being maintained to people's driveways, things like that, you know, we're getting like the. The wobble when you drive and here comes a connector, you know, driveway and it's like up over and then they're just, I don't know how to address that. I mean, that's not my job, but I'm just telling you it needs addressed.
The main issues are those, I call them soft spots.
Yes.
Um, there's also, I remember looking at the slope, the vertical slopes and.
Well, you had talked to us about a, a grand plan of reshaping, but I don't know that that's gonna be a possibility as much as. Getting a better surface.
Okay.
Um, maintenance issue, you know, program going for that so that we can have drainage regardless of the slope being redesigned. You know what I'm saying?
Right. So our, our main concern are, are those soft spots?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because by the time anyone's traveling south on that road, you're just kinda living along to get to the highway. You know, I mean, the people that live right there, I think they're very aware, but people use that as a throughway from the north all the way down to get to seventy. And we were talking earlier, there's a bus issue there, and then we have grain being hauled. You know, I mean, you're gonna have heavy trucks and semis and it's a very highly traveled road for that area. So that we'll definitely have to factor in if we're gonna close down a section of it too, you know, you don't wanna do that on there.
During harvest.
Right.
Wouldn't do it now, probably, right, or before harvest, obviously not now.
Right.
Even now till harvest, we're, just, a month from now you could be harvesting easily, probably won't be.
I think you can do some pre calculations on, you know, if you go out there and map out your sections that need torn up. If you just estimate total amount of base layer, what the cost would be to purchase that and get it hauled in and then. You know, do the ripple effect, one, one section at a time until you get to the end.
We'll have some logistics to figure out there.
Yeah. I'd suggest they look into the logistics.
Fiber optic in the road that we're gonna have to deal with, I don't know how they're gonna allow us to rock it, um.
Okay.
We'll have to do some looking.
Who's that, Wilson?
Yeah.
Yeah, do some.
How far west do they, or how far east do they go, Wilson? I thought they didn't go that far.
They go Selden.
But that's, that's east, west or east of me, I mean, I.
Vesper, I think, uh.
Probably Vesper's about fo- far as east as they go.
I don't know, they go east of there, I think to that mile, they go to one thirtieth, I think.
Okay.
I don't remember if they, during that project, they went around the corner from there and gone, but I know one thirtieth saw them.
Yeah, they're not as far as me east, I know that.
When did they do this in Marion County, recently?
Yeah, probably a month or two months ago.
So they really haven't, haven't had, they really haven't had too long to discern whether it's stabilized that road.
Right, yeah, we had all those big rains and we started getting all those, with the waterfall, those vein, and that showed up in the ditch. And there's some spots.
First time they've tried that material?
Um, the first time that they tried the.
The mesh layer and.
Yeah, and we, and we kinda, we've done that on some pavement projects, um, so like Kingman, we're doing the main street through there, we have the same issue. And they came in and did, did kind of the same thing, put down a bigger rock in that mesh and then your base and then you're paving it.
Wind farms build all their roads down here with it, doing it that way, rolled it out on every stretch of it.
We just gotta make sure who is gray in the road, knows that there's mesh there, so you don't gouge it.
Rip into it.
Right. Right, so.
Even catch your rock or rip it and stuff like that, you know, it.
So maybe.
It's tough to use on a county road, it gets bladed a lot, but in those pasture roads where there's no maintenance for the most part, I think it works better.
And you could increase the cover too, instead of six inches, you can go ten inches or something too.
Cause you go deeper, right?
I, I think one of the things you can test spot would be to get down to the base on the edge of the road and see what we're dealing with. On one of the worst spots, just go ahead and, you know, barricade off where it would, it would have, where it would have eroded and just. Dig down and see what's under there a little ways.
See how far it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
It goes really far and it's.
Then, then we might have to change our plan of attack, we don't wanna get it all opened up and then decide that we, we don't have the material or the resources to fix it, but. You could definitely.
Can we core that?
Um, so you have a geotech come out and actually core it?
Yeah. Would that tell us, I, I, you know, I don't know, would they, would they tell where, when they hit a base?
Yeah, they would tell you where they hit like shale or rock, it's like when we, we core bridges to figure out how deep and you need to drive the piling and all that stuff. Um.
You know, I, I'm a little concerned about starting digging. You know, because once you dig, you know, if we could core it where we don't have much of an exposure.
Right.
We may be better off.
Disturb what's there.
Better off, you know, to do that, to start with, to make sure that we're going to find that base and where that, how far that base is, you know. You know, if it's four or five feet, it's not something, but if it's fifteen feet, we've got a problem.
Right, right.
You know. And the other thing is, I would assume when they, uh, core that, that they would know where that water's running. That could be an issue, wouldn't it? Uh, if there is a vein there, a water vein in there that's feeding.
I don't know if they can tell us that.
If they, usually, I'm trying to think what they, on the core reports that they give us for the bridges, what they put on. They usually put like when they hit shale and then like different types of soils as they hit them.
If they hit rock, I could, you, you could tell that.
Yeah.
What type of rock it is, yeah.
They bring, they bring sample out the whole.
And like limestone, like you said, Remichael, they may have a base of limestone, which is a lot in these hills out there. Then you know there, that would be the base, so if they hit limestone, that would tell you that.
You know how deep you have to dig as well.
Right, maybe we should do that first, that'd be the simplest thing to start, huh?
The cost wise, you know, it's gonna cost, but certainly it'd be a lot cheaper to know that before we start.
Yeah.
Backhoeing out a section of road that. Once you move that dirt, you have to get it stabilized again, I mean, that's, that's just the way it is.
So, so I'm just thinking, I wonder if we have another project that's close that we could have them, you know, mobilize this project while they're coming back to.
Yeah.
They could just stop by and.
Yeah.
Who does that?
So there's Terricon, I think they're out of. Topeka, Wichita, Terricon, they're GSI.
Geotech.
Geotech. We've got a list, so like, uh, like on this, this office is eighty-seven.
What's it cost, or what's the, how do they, how do they charge?
It's like per, we usually tell, we usually tell them, you know, we want you to drill so deep. And then they're, okay, we're gonna drill so deep and it's a lump sum for that, and then it's gonna be so many dollars per foot after that. Um.
So give us.
This we could maybe just, yeah, so.
I mean, are we talking in thousands, are we talking?
Yeah, so the, let's see, I know a bridge down in Clark County is ten grand to get a punch.
How many?
So they're doing, usually these, KODG, you gotta do one at each abutment, uh, one at each pier. Um, so there's gonna be two piers, so there's gonna be four holes.
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten grand, but it, it's a lot further down to southwest Kansas than from Topeka.
For travel.
Closer, so that's if you could get some of the mobilization.
Are all these companies out of Topeka?
Uh, there's one in Wichita, uh, Terricon and Garden City and maybe Wichita. But a lot of them are more up in the northeast, cause there's a lot more work up there, but, um. Yeah, they're kinda spread out. So like on this one, we, we told them what we wanted, we sent out an invite to bid to all of them. And then they submitted their bids, so, and then we ended up selecting the lowest responsible one. And we did it there. But I, I wonder if we could, yeah, if we could find a project that's close, I'll have to talk to some of the other guys. That are doing the geotech and we just have them come up here and, and then mobilization would almost be covered.
Mm-hmm, that would be convenient, if you can think about that, we'd appreciate.
Just to keep.
Knowing what our options are.
Well, so what would they do, like if one spongy area, they would just do one, like drill a couple of holes there and that would be ten grand, you're saying?
It just depends how deep they go, if they only have to go, if they hit the rock at ten foot.
Ten feet.
Yeah, so I assume it's probably.
Well, we don't need them to drill the bad rock though, would we?
Yeah, and now I'm thinking, cause we've got.
Through it, right?
We've got a core machine, but it's for like asphalt thickness.
Well, I'm thinking if they just hit rock, quit, I mean.
Yeah, you never wanna dig it out, you just wanna know where it is.
Base is, so we could go, you know, we don't wanna go.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a core machine, but it's for like, uh, you know, some of the counties wanna know how thick their pavement is. Like, do we have three inches here, do we have twelve inches here? Um, so it's only, I think it's only good for like two foot. Um.
That rock's in there in layers though, you know, if you're dealing with a, a hill here. Elevation, if we drilled up here, might hit rock at three feet, where we could drill down here and it might be fifteen feet till we hit rock.
Right.
You know, it, it's all sitting in there in layers and we're dealing with a hill to begin with, it's not like a flat approach on a bridge.
Right, uneven.
Where.
I know.
I was thinking, if we just, use our core machine, but we're only, we only can get down two foot, but, yeah. Okay.
Well, that doesn't need to be determined today, but I would like that to be pursued.
And maybe look into if we got that, like you said, what they did in Marion County with the rocks and then that mesh base and then. What they, what that would cost maybe too, if we're doing like. If we just did one spongy area, what would that cost if you do it in a quarter of a mile, what would that cost?
Right, right. So we use this type of rock, we use this type of fabric.
So we got, if something's extremely.
Each of them is gonna cost.
You know, yeah, based on money here, you gotta make decisions too.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike? Yeah?
Uh, I have the wind farm repower on here, um, we emailed Gregory Kokman, he's the project manager with Anell for this. Um, we asked him about the red maintenance agreement and what you wanna do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he said that we could maybe revise the previous one and send it home and then start the kinda.
When are they starting?
They're gonna start sometime in July.
Okay.
Next year?
Then.
A year from now.
No, no, like in a month.
Start.
Really?
They're, they're wanting to do the, the road work this summer, I don't think the actual repower is gonna start until quarter one of twenty twenty.
Next year, that's what I thought, yeah.
But we need to have our agreement done in a month.
Start now.
Yeah, they wanna do it during the summer where there's gonna be more favorable working conditions.
Sure drier, hopefully, July, August.
Yeah, so I think Michael and I are gonna work on that draft, um, I'd like the attorney to review it, I'm not an attorney. To make sure all the legal language is in place, um, and would you guys like to look at it before we propose it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're gonna use the one we have for boards of bases.
Yeah, and, and we've, it was from two thousand seven, um. We've done all, I've probably done a dozen of these wind farm jobs since then, so we've learned a lot. Kinda things how to protect the county a little bit better, that kinda stuff. Um, since it's a repower, it's not a brand new project, um, but I think there's some language we should add a little bit.
Okay.
And then just make sure you guys are okay with it. Um, we asked him about a decommission agreement, um, he wasn't planning on doing one of those, so.
If the, if the farm, the wind farm is decommissioned, what the, what the expectations.
Right.
We don't have that in the original agreement? I mean, I read it, but I don't remember reading it.
I don't believe that's there.
That is, state law does.
Yes, I think they have to have one with the land.
Has to have.
Okay.
Have that required out of the landowner, I guess, I think our decommission would be our right of ways and our roads, would that be what we would be interested in?
Yeah.
Would there be anything else, uh, other than the disposable materials, but we can reject that, I think, I don't think they're required to take that.
Yeah, some of the other counties do go out and get decommissioning for the whole turbine, just as kind of an added protection. Cause it's hard to, they don't really share what's in the land lease agreements very well, or sometimes it's kind of vague.
But if they leave them on the land, we really, we are not zones, we really don't have any. Any say on what those people put on their land.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, they can put all those blades and all that stuff, I mean, they can stockpile just like they do the, uh, pipelines when they, you know. We've had some pipelines go out and they, some neighbors said, yeah, I'll give you my ground for so much dollars a year and. Store the pipe and I mean, I don't have any, county doesn't have any say in that, so I guess, uh, on the decommission. Won't have any, county doesn't have any say in that, so I guess, uh, on the decommission part, uh, since we're not zoned, I'm not sure what we.
Okay.
What we can actually ask for, other than for the right of way and the route.
Right, some of the counties that are unzoned, they put it in their CUP, conditional use permit, there's gotta be a pilot decommission road maintenance. So, so I guess if it's not in your CUP, you probably just have a pilot and a road maintenance. With their, their conditional use permit.
Well, didn't we do a stem discussion here about a month ago, that they were gonna take those blades off, and we were worried about what they would kick them all out of pasture or something. Didn't say, didn't they say there were somebody now, I thought was a discussion, that they were gonna cut them up, those blades and haul them on.
I think Michael had.
I don't know what they're gonna do, I heard people say that that's been done in the past.
Oh, okay.
You know, they haven't told us exactly what they're gonna do, but they did, they did mention.
Question for them before we signed, oh, and they don't give an answer?
They said that they're going to recommend that the contractor seek a form to recycle.
So they're, they're hiring out a contractor to remove the material.
I believe so.
And they're just recommending to their hired contract that they recycle, but there's no.
There's no recycling that exists.
Like Mr. Wallace said, if the landowner takes that into their own hands, that's, that's not our, we have no jurisdiction over that.
Okay.
So, I do agree, and that's the way it should be, unfortunately, I mean, not that I wanna see a bunch of piles of leftover parts, but.
Okay.
That's on the landowner.
Okay, then we'll just pursue the road maintenance agreement and then.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I guess the only thing would be that, anything that they had put in, that they would want to remove from our road too.
Right.
Such as, you know, that they put some stabilization, planks down, didn't they one time, and we had them removed, right, how was that then? I believe over some culverts they did, and those are out, which we need to, we'll have to inspect that.
Yeah.
Protect that in the next phase, uh, for the pipelines, I don't remember if they left the uh mats over the pipelines, I just don't recall that those got left there or not. But you know, the utility companies will have to be involved in, in this too, based on the loads and everything that are gonna be coming through.
So they'd have to return everything back to pre-existing conditions or whatever, and then any, any improvements need to be approved by county.
Yeah, and the good thing is, is we was able to work out two of the turning radiuses off of two ninety to be permanent. Where they're able to reuse them in the future here, so there won't be major modifications that I foresee at any of the locations right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate your time. All right, we had our schedule backwards there for a minute, Gary, you're next. You had a fifteen minute slot, but we're a little behind, so.
How are you guys?
Okay, how are you?
Looking up, down at the grass instead of up, I guess. Oh, I've just got an issue, you know, I had an issue here about a month ago, where I had an accident, and. I didn't report it, I went off the road a little bit.
To maybe enter into an executive session if you wanna talk about.
If, if, is this, is it involved health?
Yeah.
Then we, we have to.
We have to, okay, okay, well then we better go to the executive session.
For your protection.
Yeah, we, we better, I'll go, just try explaining this all, so we can get this figured out here, okay, all right.
Would someone like to make a motion?
If I figure out how to do it again, I'll make a motion to go and to move to recess and to execute a session for, how long do we think?
It shouldn't take too long.
Ten minutes?
Um, it's like fifteen, fifteen here.
Fifteen minutes, for the purpose of discussing, uh. Employer, employer, employee.
Well, the first statement would be, um, discussing employee concerns, how about that?
Employee concern.
And then the justification.
With, and justification to discuss personnel matters and not elected personnel.
Yes.
To be involved with, uh, the commission, Mr. Gary Frederick King. And their county clerk, Don, and, uh, that's it, I guess, for, and then to reconvene into the courthouse basement.
I think that's it. KSA seventy-five forty.
Pursuant to KSA seventy-five four three one nine, to be number one.
I'll second, it's been moved and second into entering into executive session for personnel matters, is there any further discussion? Not those in favor of, aye?
Aye.
Aye, and none opposed. We'll reopen the meeting.
I, I go start accusing somebody, guys, you know what's gonna happen.
Sure.
You understand, I'm totally about that situation.
When that kind of stuff is disappearing, and that vandalism is going on, it needs to be reported, just so we have a record of it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Please do that immediately.
Okay, all right, I report that, or?
Yes, you do.
If I need to call the sheriff and have that.
Yeah.
And, and I would communicate with Michael that you're doing it too.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'll let him.
Tell Michael you're doing it, so he knows what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I, I mean, you know, I don't, you know, guys, I don't know what the hell I've done anybody.
Yeah, you know, those things, those things.
That has happened, yeah, that's a lot of, yeah, a lot of.
Okay, let's not say that that just happens, there's something that needs to be reported to the sheriff.
Well, no.
Yeah, no, no.
I don't agree with that.
Saying it does need, it happens, but it still should be reported.
But there's a purpose to it happening, it's not just, I mean, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know what's going on, so, I don't know if there's somebody who wants that position up there and have that blade, or. What the hell's going on, you know?
Okay.
You know, I mean, I don't know, I really don't know, guys, I, you know, I do, I tell you, I do like the new blade, I wanna thank you for that. I haven't ever seen all three of you together to thank you for that, that blade's very nice, you know, I've, and I, and I have some leg issues of walking and stuff. It seems like, it seems like when I come down here, there's a couple guys watching me every morning, and watching me how I'm walking. You know, that's just county observation, I don't know if I'm taking it personally, or, or what the hell's going on.
I've, I've opened up the meeting, so, well, if you want another executive session, we can.
Okay, all right, I know, I really better just stop now.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for coming though.
Okay, all right, we'll see about doing what we said we were gonna do.
Yeah, get with the doctor up there.
Yeah, and, and thank you for, like I said, thank you again for the, for the reader, and I'm glad to see that you guys are putting in the time clock system. It's something that needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we're gonna do this three one one, hopefully, we get going.
Yes, we need to get that going again too.
Well, we're gonna work on it here.
Yeah, see what you guys can do, yeah, that, that thing is very helpful, I've reported a lot of stuff in on that, so.
Okay, good, thanks Gary for coming in.
Yeah, you bet, okay, I think I'm done.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Done?
Yeah, she, I think she's catching up on minutes or something.
Okay.
Are we just looking at the state plan?
No, so, I, um, have sent out some information for people to bid. But I'm just gonna be honest with you, I don't really think that this is the best realm for me to just send out. So, there was two businesses that was at our corpse meeting, and I've met with both of them. One is on the agenda for June third, I believe already, and the other one will be on the agenda thereafter, but they are like benefit management companies. So they manage all of their benefits, including the health insurance, and like they'd go out and get bids and things like that. But to, to ask each of them to go out and get bids for us is a little complicated. So, Parsami says that what we need to do is look, I don't know what their costs are, you know, they really didn't talk numbers with me. But, um, have them actually come in and give you guys a presentation, and us figure out who we like, if we like them, if we don't like them. And then have them go out and get bids, basically, it sounds like they have kind of a marketplace, but for bigger employers. To go out, they'll also talk to you about being self-funded or non-self-funded, um, we haven't been self-funded in a very long time. And that's what we used to call stop loss, and when Blue Cross Blue Shield wanted to increase their stop loss, still like twenty-five thousand dollars, is when we ended up going to say all the insurance plan. Now, um, the one company said, he's worked with, you know, one county, and the cost savings was in the state plan. For them, and so there's, there's kind of different options.
State as well as private.
Yes, the other thing that I liked about it was they'll come in and do your open enrollment. So they'll be the ones that are in front of the open enrollment, telling you about all of the changes, they'll, they'll sit down and make sure every employee knows.
We don't have to provide that counseling for them.
Yes, and they'll know exactly what it is that they have, um, not just health insurance wise, but retirement, um. You know, those third-party vendors that you guys let come in.
They do counseling.
Yeah, basically, and the other aspect that I liked about it was that they can kinda sit down with an employee and talk to him one-on-one. So there are some savings on the health saving, or on the state health plan, if we would encourage people to do HSAs and things like that. But, um, a lot of employees don't understand what they are.
And it's time consuming to figure all that out, I know it, so.
I mean, I do, I did send out the information for two people to give us bids, Call Valley Insurance, and. There's a place called Federated something or another out of Great Bend, which is similar to, and Smith County has it. But it's similar to what we had a very long time ago, which was benefits management. Although they said, you basically get two cards, a Blue Cross Blue Shield card, and then an insurance card for themselves. They build Blue Cross Blue Shield, whatever Blue Cross Blue Shield doesn't pay, then it, then you build the, basically it's my understanding, it's like the group. The group is considered like a secondary, and then the group pays for the difference out of it, and you have to build up and have reserves and things like that. And not that it's a bad plan or an idea, but the amount that Smith County is paying for their premium. We're cheaper, we're like half the price with the state plan, so you just don't know how that would benefit. But it's almost like, they, they describe it as Medicare and your secondary insurance, so you have one card, and then when they build that, then they build a second card. Now, mind you, when I got the center's numbers, they're primarily over fifty, um, years old. So they're an older plan, so their costs are a little bit higher than if we have younger people on the plan.
Well, I also think something we need to consider going into this year is, right now, we're paying ninety percent of any plan. We're budgeting one point one million, so it's one-sixth of our entire budget is specifically for that expense. And that really constrains our ability to pay more. Well, and, and even hourly, you know, I mean, their wages are directly affected by having a ten dollar an hour family plan. I mean, that's what it boils down to, forty hours a week, we're spending ten dollars an hour per employee who has a family plan, cause we're paying ninety percent of it. So, you know, we, we can do different thi, we can pay a hundred percent of each individual plan. We can pay seventy percent of, uh, spouse plans, we can pay fifty percent of family plan, you know, we have.
Options.
Some flexibility that can then reflect in their pay rate, and yes, it works out for some better and not as well for some others. But, uh, one of the continuing conversations we've had over the last two years is, how do we recruit younger people? To take the place of those who are going to retire, because the succession planning is non-existent. And we cannot necessarily go into the future, spending as much, if not more, in healthcare plans. Than we do for our actual employee's paycheck, you know, I mean, it's a, that's a hard balance to find. And I know that the health insurance plan means everything to some of the employees, but it also means nothing to some of the employees, so. And some places are, it would provide a hundred percent coverage.
Well, yeah, we heard that here, but, but like that Shannon, who was, you know, one of our, uh. People for HR director, not HR, but EMS director, yeah, they said up there, it's a hundred percent. But, but, I don't know, who knows what they pay in wages too, right?
Well, clearly better based upon the annual income that he was saying.
Well, his, he'd get, yeah, he gets better, but, uh, I don't know, what, you have suggestions what to do?
I really think that you guys, you know, and if I need to find a third, I can find a third, but I think you guys need to look at these management companies.
What is it, is it a fee or a contract?
There, there is a fee, um, some of them said, it just kinda depends on how we go and what insurance plan we choose. Some take a fee that they charge you outright, this is what it will cost you per year to have us help you with this. Others are, they'll take a pre, portion of the premium for the health insurance plan. So she said, like, both of them said it's kinda dependent upon what health insurance plan you end up going with.
So then are they available throughout the year for counsel, that kind of counsel, you can direct the employee to go to them? Oh, that would be wonderful.
And one of the companies has an online thing where they can send the link to the employee, and their spouse and them can sit down together at the same time. And watch the same information that the employee is getting from the representative.
You know, that actually.
Enroll insurance, it sounded like both of them would actually come out and sit down with the employee and talk to them. Um, they also each offer an HR aspect, so that your human resource officer. The one company offered attorneys that you could contact through the HR, they had fifteen different, the other one had HR services. They didn't really get into a lot of detail, which is what they can do when they come here and talk to you. Um, there was just a lot of benefits that I can see, um, one of the things the lady talked about. With the one company, was that they work on all those third-party vendors, guys, we have a lot of third-party vendors, and you don't realize what the cost and. Amount of labor that we spend.
Just calculating.
Yes, and making sure that they're.
Well, that's actually potential to reduce the burden on the HR responsibility.
Yes.
I mean, and if we're talking about what we're gonna do with payroll, then that is not gonna justify a full-time position.
No, um, so, you know, and I don't know if the option is to split it, if the option is just to kinda. It's not gonna take over the human resource part of it, like, they're not going to do the discipline.
No, the employee filing, like for their individual.
Take care of all the benefits.
This would be, but that's.
Do they do the capers?
Really?
Yes, it sounded like both of them did, and if they don't do, like, we. We're still gonna have the payroll aspect of it where we report and upload that data and stuff.
But they're going to be, they would, if I have a question about my capers, they would be the ones that would, should know the information, or not you. Necessarily have to keep up.
Yes, like I would, my, my understanding was that I would enroll people, but in, I didn't ask pointed questions about that. Because they, they kept saying, we would make sure that we took care of all the enrollments, so I'm assuming that they would take care of the capers enrollment as well. But, um, each of them had a little book that they brought that talked, like, one was, um, Kiowa County, the other one had. Barton County, I think it was, their benefit books with them, and so kind of, basically, they give a bounded out book every single year with their plan information. Their deductibles, all of their, all of the insurance options that are available for them, so those third-party vendors, if it's AFLEC, you have an AFLEC information. Um, if it is, if they have a different comp plan, um, so basically, kinda gives the employee, this is what benefits are offered this year. This is everything that you can take, or everything that you can't take. Um, the one company said that they worked with anybody that had less than five policy members. That they work on getting them billed through their homes, rather than bill through the county type processes. But it's all in a matter of what it is that you guys want, but I, I will tell you, it's hard. Because we sit there and we shirk vendors away constantly, until they figure out that all they have to do is get on the agenda and talk to you guys. And then in the past, they get on the agenda and, and sure, alone, talk to the employees, well, that all takes county, county time. I mean, do you have the employees, do you require them to meet with them on their own time, do you require them to use their leave time?
Right.
So that's kinda why we've been doing the Columbus Day training, but it kinda can turn into a nightmare. So, I, I don't know if, if this is an option, it's.
Certainly, I think it's one to pursue, are they working on a percentage of our benefit plan?
She said it varies depending on what we choose to offer.
I told them to come with prices for you guys, cause they didn't, they really wouldn't tell me how much they cost. I mean, I can contact some of the counties that they said that they wanted to see what their cost is, but I think it depends on how many, what plan. But, they said either you could pay contractually, and just pay them X amount of dollars per year, and they would manage our benefits. Or if you had, and I took it, that if you had something. Or if you had, and I took it that if you had something other than Blue Cross Blue Shield where you had a managed self-service or self-funded program. They would take a percentage of the premium. And I want to say like Smith Center's example was if they build out. Say two thousand dollars for a plan, then the cost for them was, was, um, twenty dollars or.
Two hundred, yeah, yeah.
Look up Kawa County. I think they're not too much larger. Probably a little larger than New York.
Do you say Kiowa?
Kawa is, uh, Madison Lodge, uh, no, it's Barbour. It's down south. But King.
It may be, yeah.
The Kawa may be bigger. They may have a big town in there actually, but they're down there somewhere, southern Kansas.
They both had really good points. They both approached, you know, talking to me in different mannerism, what they feel like is important and what isn't.
How many counties do either of them serve, do you know?
Um, they didn't give me firm, they just kind of started naming off. And to be honest with you, I didn't pass pen and paper.
But they do, I mean, this is their field. I mean, they, they already are doing that in other con. See, cause I'm thinking what you do is you take the contractual line item of the HR budget and attribute it to that. You know, you, we can, we can literally budget out of HR. Depending on what we have to do with this new position, we can budget out of it and use the contractual line item to cover that cost. Then we can see what we have left for how much time, you know, I mean, depending on what the payroll situation ends up being.
And they said they didn't, neither one of the companies go out and redo the insurance. Like, if you get insurance through them, they don't do it every single year. They can do it every single year. I think that will drive the prices to what it is that you guys desire to go out and check for information.
It's twenty-five-hundred? Is that what you meant, population?
Of Kawa County?
Twenty-five-hundred?
Yeah. So they're, they're similar to us.
They said both Blue Cross Blue Shield and Etna, they can get information from our claims usage. If you start to go out to a third party, it's, you, we're gonna have to have the employees fill out a health questionnaire. And then they'll, so there's a lot of work that happens .
I mean, I, it makes me feel more comfortable to sign a shorter-term contract when you have a company like that because they can be doing the searching for you in the interim. You know, if you, if you commit yourself to three years like we've done for the state, then you really don't have a chance to take advantage of any fluctuation. But, and because it's so volatile, I mean, it's, we know that and it's just steadily increasing. But the opportunity for them to do searching for you is invaluable. I mean.
It might be something you want to go to a self-funded plan then. You know, what they both said was five years is what they plan. For it to pay for itself. So you, you budget high for five years. And then after the fifth year, you should have a pretty good reserve balance and then they can reduce. Um, you know, all in all, I think we have a healthy plan. Yes, we have some highway workers that are a little bit higher up in, in age, but. I, I don't hear employees talking about their health issues like we used to have for a while. So I don't think we have a lot of cancers at all.
We can take advantage of not having to fork out a lot of big medical expenses, making our risk go up .
Self-funded is, if you have a couple of those years where you have three or four of them. You're, you're sunk. I, I guess, no bigger than we are, I'm a little, I'm a little afraid of self-funding. I really am. I just thought that. You know, you have such a small group, you know, if you're in a large group, I, I think it works a lot better.
You know, and I, I told them both that our prescriptions are number one employees' concerns.
Um, the coverage, what the coverage is, yeah.
And because it is very expensive. So, um, I just wanted to kind of let you know that I met with them and.
That's awesome.
I still feel like that's the way that I wanna go.
Yeah.
I mean, I've sent numbers to the other people. We can still have them come in and visit with you guys and stuff.
Yeah, but just being able to question them when they come will be invaluable. We can kind of start to determine.
You're right. None, none of us are, none of us are expertise is in this field and it has gotten to the point where you about have to have somebody that has. Some expertise that works with this because it is, it is just a.
Well, like we found out, I mean, a lot of our most qualified candidates to interview for HR are going to be expensive. So if we're, if, if we can contract this out, if we can find something with the payroll situation, then we really don't need someone for more than. Employee files, interdepartmental issues, keeping track of all the paperwork that you don't need to pay to have done in your office, you know. I mean, it can be, it can still be a standalone department, but they have their own networking and it doesn't even necessarily need to be full-time. I would suggest that we might consider. Combining it with another position.
Well, I think that's where we're headed. I don't think there's any doubt about it.
Well, then we need to get a move on.
The, the thing that I liked the most and, and, you know, I just want to close with those being said. We have employees that are taking Plan A because every other employee is taking Plan A. If my husband was not on Medicare, I'd have an HSA in a heartbeat because we don't go to the doctor. We just don't. That doesn't mean that we won't have. We have younger employees that really should have that HSA building up their account. Using, cause a hundred dollars of their premium or eighty-three thirty-three of their premium a month goes into their HSA account. Uh, yes, they have to fund it a little bit themselves, but, you know, and this guy, the, the one gentleman said. You know, we will kind of explain to them, you know, how that works. And I said, my big thing is, is I know I should be pushing them to a cheaper plan. But what if something happens and it ends up being a nightmare? And so I just have chose to stay back. But there are ways, even on the state health and pla- plan, that we could probably reduce some of the costs if we just nudged them in the right direction. But it's knowing and understanding how all of that works that is.
And like you said, to have time to do the presentation, there's a lot of question-answer. That takes a lot of time. I mean, we know just from these meetings. To do a back and forth is a lot more involved than to watch a presentation. And at the end of the presentation, you don't know if they get it or not. And it's not their fault. It's just, it's information that you're not dealing with on a regular basis. And, yeah, that's, that's definitely.
Thank you, Dawn.
A good option.
Do, do that. Yeah, Dawn, thanks.
We'll just, and we'll plan on getting them on. They all know that we kind of are in a crunch. Um, I had told them probably by July we wanted to be making some form of decision. So I think, um, that both were gonna try to just get through the Memorial Day weekend. He is already on the schedule. I'm gonna try to put her on a different day just because. It gives you something to think about and you can think about it a little bit longer on, on your own. But, um, with that being said, you know, they both know that we're kind of working towards something. And then once, once they visit with you, you guys make a decision. If you want to go this route, then what I would say is that we'll start working on if we need to have health questionnaires completed by employees or not. Um, and of course, they, whoever it is that does that will help with that part of it. Anyways, okay.
Thanks, Dawn.
And then did you guys want to review the other job descriptions that I had for HR and the ambulances or the? The applications?
I guess, I, I really think that we might call the guy from Missouri back. And, and, or maybe you just physically been telling that we have an HR position as well. And we would like to combine them. I, I feel he has the administrative, uh, experience. That he might be able to do that. And I think that, uh, you know, I, I can see that being one job. And I think we could, well, it would save any money, but we could probably offer a decent salary.
A better, yeah, yeah.
But I guess, that's my suggestion, is we call the guy from Missouri and see if he would be interested in. And you could email him the HR stuff and say, hey, you know, we're, we're kind of stuck here. We don't, we're. You know, would you be interested in coming back and interviewing or?
I do not disagree. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention, you know, we just heard this morning about. Just briefly about the emergency management position, you know. We are one of the only small counties to have that as a full-time. Unabridged situation, you know, I mean, we need to look at what our options are for consolidating. It kind of makes sense that an emergency manager could run an EMS department. You know, if we combine those positions, that's a full-time person who not only has to have the credentials. To be the emergency manager, but also has to then do the logistics for the EMS department.
I disagree with you, Alexis, but we've just talked about making the HR a part-time job and I don't think we're going to be able to hire a part-time HR first.
I know, but I also want to bring up another issue.
But, but I think, and quite frankly, no more than we're paying for an emergency manager position right now. There's no way we can ever fill that again for that. And I think you're right. When that comes up, I think we need to think about that would be a consolidation of someone.
Well, I'm talking, I mean, if, let's just take the budget that you have for emergency management and cut it by a third. You take the budget that you have to pay an EMS director, you cut that by a third. You still have two-thirds of both of those budgets to pay one position. Good money to be salary that they're probably gonna put in more than forty hours a week and they know it. And they're, they're linked to emergency systems in multiple, multiple ways. Not just one person dealing over here and one person dealing over there. I mean, I see how that fits together. Now, on the other hand, we have a potential position in the courthouse that could be full-time. Um, we were just, and, and this is not in the, this is not necessarily tomorrow. I'm saying, talk about succession planning. We were informed by Mr. McQueen that all the mapping that we pay an, an entire position to do. It was contracted out by other counties for eleven thousand dollars a year. So that position all of a sudden becomes obsolete for a full-time person when you can then contract it out. So that, you, if that person still needs to put a little bit of time into the appraiser's office. You could have an HR person that does both of those. I mean, we had that position helping with the highway department before. So there are some options to create positions that are combined with more responsibility and better pay. And not just keep having these weak-paying jobs that do not have cumbersome duty.
But we're back to, uh, Al Jones said, do you think we should contact that guy in Missouri?
I, I don't disagree. I mean, I, I do think that's a viable option .
Brought up are good points too, but I think maybe those are a little further in the future. What you, uh, what you, like you were just talking about.
Well, let's just say, we, the, let's just say someone in the appraiser's, uh, office retires. That does not necessarily need a replacement as much as it needs a contract. You see what I'm saying?
I, I, you know, but right now we have, we have those two positions, I guess, is, is my point. And I think we have an opportunity to, to move in this direction. Do I disagree? Yes. If, when another vacancy comes open, I think we have to look at it. I combine them. But right now we have HR and we have ambulance and they both need filled immediately.
And we, and I think what you just said, to deal, to contact this guy and see if he'd be interested in taking both.
He's the only person I have seen that interviewed that could do both.
And he, and he could.
I agree.
And he, and he was, seemed like he had a lot of management experience. He could help you out on a lot of this other stuff. And maybe us out because we have a lot of stuff going on .
Person to be reporting to us directly. I mean, it's the only way to stay informed.
And we have a lot of stuff going on. He could maybe do some more legwork.
Then Dawn doesn't have to be a filtration process for every other department. I mean, that's a lot of extra work. Let's talk numbers then. What do we have left in the HR budget and what do we?
I, I want to interview.
We did interview.
But I, I, we're gonna have to talk to him about HR too.
We need to know what our numbers are. I think so we have an idea.
Um, let me go get budgets.
My concern is, wasn't this the same scenario where they applied because it was part-time? I don't think that person applied because it was full-time. I think they applied because we advertised it as part-time, right?
Uh, I think he was wanting a full-time job. No.
Okay.
You know, cause the message that came back was. Excuse me, sorry. Um. Was that he had visited with his wife. They were wanting, he was wanting something full-time.
Okay.
But if it wasn't going to be full-time, then he would like to be able to, you know, come and work three days and be on.
Yes, I remember that. Yeah, have a specific schedule and.
He wanted to go back to his lake house.
Okay, so. Let's still talk money though. I mean, can you tell us what we have left in the salary line item for this year?
Well, if you combined EMS with HR, right?
Right. I mean, what we were paying out, what we had budgeted last year was, I believe it was twenty-one dollars an hour. For twenty hours, no wait, twenty-four hours. It was one shift. So we have .
For EMS, right.
That's what we had in the budget. So it was twenty-one dollars an hour for twenty-four hours.
Was that twenty-four hours? He was also supposed to go on runs?
He, if a run came in while he was on, that was his shift . But he was supposed to do paperwork and.
Work and manage the people.
Right, but it was only for one day a week. It was one twenty-hour shift . Yeah. And instead of it being.
Then if we had HR, what was we paying HR?
Well, we line itemed a con, we were, we were total budget at about forty. And we had line itemed out, like, I want to say like eight thousand for contractual and then a few thousand for. I think it came out to about thirty in salary. You know, it was like eight thousand for contractual and two thousand for supplies or something like that. But we've already supplied the office. We've already taken out salary money to pay for this depart, for the clerks department doing their job. So what we have left for the end of the year is what we have left for six months of the year. But budgeting for next year , we don't necessarily need that total budget for the HR because we want to. I would say we use the contract line item to pay the company that's gonna manage the benefits. We potentially leave the payroll in the clerk's office if they decide to do that.
Dawn would still do that.
I mean, she, we have to talk to her about it. And then you're only asking someone to spend about twenty hours.
Then what HR wouldn't hardly do much.
Well, what they're gonna do is they're gonna keep employee files, which we've never done. I mean, I shouldn't say that in that manner. It's not that it's never been done. It's never been done properly .
Been a, been a, had an overview over.
Well, you have to keep the complaints, you have to keep the evaluations, you have to keep the, um, parent. The deductive deduction information. You have to keep their certificates.
It's gonna be on page nine. Oh, yeah, because we've been taken out of contractual.
For you?
Yeah, there's twenty-eight thousand left in the fund.
Total.
That's for.
The HR budget .
Clearing? Where, where were you talking about, Dawn?
Um, yeah.
Oh, eighteen, human resource .
There's twenty-eight thousand remaining.
So we started off with thirty-five, one fifty, three thousand for, no wait, that's not what we started off with, is it?
Forty-two, one fifty.
Forty-two, one fifty total. I thought it was maybe thirty. It was thirty-five and then seven, so four for contractual and three for commodities. So we're in the negative for contractual because you've just been pulling from there. That's fine. That's how we can keep track of it then.
I didn't think I'd been that much. It's, it's not all me, I don't think.
Well, that's several months though. I mean, that's.
That's true.
Is this mine?
Yeah, that's yours.
That means that we've spent that amount, which is what, ten? Not even ten thousand, right?
Last month was higher, but last month was also a very long amount.
But when did we not have an HR person? February, March?
January.
January. So, okay, so for almost, for four months then, February, March, April and May, let's say. Not quite. And we're paying it out at a higher rate.
Yeah.
So.
I haven't worked as much this month as, I mean, I will towards the end of the month, but I haven't worked as much as I did just. Trying to be less stressed, but it's always work. Think of everything during the weekend, but I haven't got time.
Okay, so this thirty-five, one fifty. Was based on forty hours, right?
Yes.
So it came out to, so we budgeted for about sixteen fifty an hour, something. I'm just rounding off .
Cause we did pay increases.
Okay, that's what we budgeted for. And then we had, Dawn, I was just trying to do a guess. We were at about twenty-one. When, when we did the budget with the part-time EMS director, it was twenty-one an hour for twenty-four hours-ish, right?
They gave him five dollars more an hour. So whatever his paramedic, I think, I was thinking it was like twenty-two.
I think it came to twenty-one, whatever. I'll just use that as a round. Okay, so if we did, what's half of twenty-eighty? Ten forty. So at, at part-time then, at halftime, I'll call it, it was twenty-one times ten forty. It was twenty-one, eight forty. Okay, so let's say we approximately budgeted twenty two thousand out of the entire EMS department for the director. But that's only halftime, he was doing more than that because the one shift is just twenty four hours, maybe I should do it at two thirds.
Um. Yeah, I mean, depending on what you thought.
I'm gonna do it at thirteen sixty. Let's say we budgeted twenty eight, five sixty.
Who's emergency communications, that's our nine one one owner.
Yeah, that's the sheriff's, they're coming over there, people running radios for sure.
Radios, huh?
Okay. This is the breakdown that that I'm getting, if we cut the HR payroll line item. Where are we?
In the diner.
If we cut, okay, this is our line item for HR. If we cut that in half because we're only gonna do part time, I'm, and I didn't use this number, I used the number that we. Twenty eight, where did I get that? Here. So, we don't, I'm cutting that in half because we would allocate the rest of that budget to pay the company that's potentially gonna, yeah, and and pay, to pay. What is your intention, to have payroll come out of your office and just pay?
You know, I have still a part time person budgeted in my office, I just.
You could also take some of the payroll budget out of contractual for HR. Put that into your budget to have a part time person.
Yeah, cause you, if you remember when I did my budget, I wasn't really sure, so I have a part time person in there already, of course. I gave Hannah a little bit of a raise, but um, I still think, especially during election times, I'm gonna need an extra person.
I wonder if we could contract that for you, I mean, if if payroll, if you can't do anything with payroll from the first of the month to the twentieth of the month. We could contract someone who could do it on their own time, coming in at the end of the month to just have it done.
I'm, I'm hoping that once we get the. Yeah, I'm hoping once we get payroll done. Or the time clock going, that it will help with that, because it won't have to. Um, you know, no offense, everybody's upset, department heads are a little bit upset, because they're gonna have to take ownership as the weeks go by. I I guess for me, I foresee we, you know, you pull up and then you take care of any problems, so like. For example, if somebody forgot to clock out at lunch, um, then your, your department head is going in there on a weekly basis and fixing all of that. Now, if they wait to do that until the end of the month, then yeah, they're gonna have issues, but if they fix it.
But all of those issues used to take up time for HR, and it really falls on the department itself, and it falls on each individual employee, that's how, that's how you. So, make it more accountable.
So what I feel like is gonna happen is, this is what I feel like is gonna happen, I feel like. Once the time clock system, each of the departments, you know, finishes and corrects anything that is incorrect. Then it's just a matter of importing it into our system.
You don't have to, re, you don't have to re, review every time card for errors and all that crap.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, anybody, even a person of a family could contract to come in for four day, I mean, if they knew that it takes them four days. To assimilate all the information.
I think I could fill that, I, I think I could find somebody part time out of my office to do that, does that make sense?
Yeah, but then you're gonna have benefits, you're gonna have.
You are, but if you're providing them, you know, you could, you could say you're contracting with them, but if you're providing them the computer and the program to do all their work. They're actually, you might as well, but you won't have, they won't have benefits, they'll just have social security and Medicare taxes that you're paying out.
Yeah.
So, it's just a matter of if I could find somebody that's a little part time like that, a retired person.
But what are we expecting, are we expecting them to cut, cause I'm thinking, that's all one week, you know, are you gonna say? Are they gonna work it all the rest of the month, I mean, are we gonna find something for them to do, why don't we just say it's a five day job? You know?
Yeah.
I, I, that's just my opinion, you know? Here's a five hundred dollar job at a hundred dollars a day, get it done, here's your deadline, and I'll see you next month, you know, it's kind of. Otherwise, then, then you're responsible for filling in someone else's time, giving them things to do, I mean, I'm sure you have enough to do that you need help.
I, I do.
Also seasonal.
I do, but once we figure out how much time, it may not take that much time, I may be able to do it. I don't, I don't know, until we get the time clock system.
When is that happening?
Well, originally we were gonna try to do for June first, we've got them all installed, now we gotta just get internet to them, or make sure internet's to them. And then we're gonna start with the test sample of people, so.
Maybe July first?
I think our, I would like to start it on an actual time period, so I think June twenty sixth is what I'm aiming for. And that we will do the test people during the month of June. Now, with that being said, we still have to get department heads trained and then we have to work on training employees.
Do they train, will they bring in training?
Um, it looks like it's all web ads, so, um. I don't really know, I haven't been very pleased with the training that we've had so far, but most of it's been. So basically, we get twenty hours of support with what we paid for, if we need a little bit more, we'll have to get more. But what they've been doing is, we thought we were gonna watch the training video and he, and he was gonna kinda demonstrate. They were actually setting it up while we were there, so, um, so like they set up the programming side of it and set up the files, we've imported the people in. Now it's just a matter of the next stage, so, which will be sometime this week, we'll have to make an appointment. And then I need to get department heads in the following week, which, like, LaDonna's gonna be gone, so it'll probably be the first week in June before I can do that. And it sounded like there, we'll give them access, they'll get online, and it will be like a tutorial with everybody, this is how you do this.
Now, there'll be a few bugs to begin with, we'll get it worked out, and I think it'd be better for everybody. And make them be more accountable, it'd be easier for you, paperwork wise, it'd be good.
Yeah, and you know, we're still gonna have, we're still gonna have the issues, the issues with balancing your health insurance. You know, there's nothing I can do right now, the state of Kansas doesn't send their health insurance bill out until the twenty fifth. So we can't balance those benefits until the twenty fifth, you know, most of the people that are on are okay, it's those people that are on the HSA plans. Where a portion of their premium goes, so you have to kinda swap, if they get their points, you have to swap money. Um, so that way at the end of the year, their W two is correct, so.
So, just going back here to what we were talking about, if we combine those positions, I'm gonna suggest salary. Because we have no idea how to calculate hours, and and we're gonna be paying above the exemption rate even if they do institute that new law.
Okay, so more than thirty eight thousand three hundred?
Yeah. I mean, that's what I'm getting, because we can't ask, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, that job too, they, they may have to appropriate more time one week over here, next week over there. So you can't say, you gotta do ten hours here, ten hours there, they, they, they gotta be free to do what they need to do.
Right, and and the disadvantage to combining these two positions is. Where, we, we were only looking at twelve or thirteen dollars an hour for HR, we're looking at double that for an EMS director, so. W- we're going to be at a disadvantage paying out more for having someone to the HR, but I look at it like this, you offer them a salary position. Their full time duty is to the EMS, and they must keep up with the expected expectations of the HR position. It's not, we're not gonna bill out the HR hourly, we can't, I mean, it's going to have to come with the position's expectations, like you said. You may have a really busy week where you're checking all the billing, and a bunch of stuff goes wrong at the EMS department, you're not gonna get any HR work done that week.
Right.
But then you may need to catch up for the end of the month issues, for deductions and and then be in. They're gonna have to correspond with one of these companies, giving them all the information, so it's a lot of management administration stuff. From the table, but they're also gonna be expected to have to perform field work when necessary for EMS. So I think we're gonna pay out at the EMS rate, and then make it salary so that when they do do HR work. If they have to get something done that week, we're not paying overtime for that, that's, I don't think that's beneficial to the county.
If it's salary.
It has to be an expectation.
If it's salary, then uh, you don't have to overtime or.
If, so, that federal law, which ironically, one of those companies has that, I should have brought it down, they have it in the newsletter, but the, the. Department of Labor, who does the FLSA, they are, are recommending. Thirty eight thousand three hundred and I think five dollars or fifty dollars is the base salary. So anything, if you pay a salaried employee anything less than that, then you must pay them overtime.
Oh, okay.
So that's where, when I was talking about emergency management and some of these meetings, you guys are gonna have to start coming down on that, because I don't think that we pay him that much. I, I haven't computed our salary people, but anybody that is salaried will start accruing overtime, so that means your road supervisor.
I'm just still wondering how we're getting overtime on the emergency management position when other counties, three times as big as ours, don't even have it as a full time job.
Request to review his depart, or his time cards.
Okay. I, I move, I, I'm gonna do that so I don't forget, I moved to request to review uh, emergency management time cards.
For what period would you like, like a year?
Let's do um, January two thousand eighteen to present.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yes, I move.
For the purpose of just evaluation?
Well, we need, I, for the purpose of looking at the position, I mean, we were just told today that Ellsworth and Russell share a position, but we're paying. With a, I mean, an eighth of that many people, I, I wanna, you know, I wanna see why we need that for Lincoln County. When other counties, three times our size, don't.
Well, and it's good for you guys to look at that to begin with.
We should be looking at that for all of our departments underneath of us, it's not just a.
I'll second it.
And this, this is my thing with it, is maybe you guys might look at the time card and see. You know, what I'm talking about, and and then you might say, hey, it would be worth paying him. I don't know what the difference is between his current salary, I, I haven't looked to see.
Upping the salary versus paying the overtime, is what you're saying, so we don't know how much we've paid out in overtime under his budget right now.
Well, nothing, because he's exempt.
Oh, but that, but that's gonna change, I see what you're saying, that's gonna change, yeah.
And it, and it probably wouldn't hurt to look at all of the department heads, I think LaDonna's the only one that's gonna be over, just because she has that RN. So she gets paid a little bit higher, but I don't.
Well, yeah, we need to see where we're at, it might just, w- we might be better off to give everybody a raise and clip them at the.
Well, if you don't have to pay overtime, depends on how much overtime they put in, if they only put in one hour.
But the discussion that we had a couple of months ago was, the policy is no overtime, so it needs to be pre-approved, there has to be a reason for it. I mean, right now, I would think that we should be having overtime in the highway department.
Well, right, not today, cause it's raining out there, but.
Well, there's plenty of organizing and phone calls to do, I'm sure. Not from them, I mean from the supervisors, not from, I'm not talking about our laborers, I'm talking by, yeah, whoever being the supervisor. Okay, there's no further discussion, it's been motioned and seconded to review time cards for emergency management, January two thousand eighteen to present, those in favor vote aye? Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think if we're gonna do it for one, we do it for all.
Well, we'll do it next week for the next one, we can't do them all at once.
We can, we could, motion could been to do them all.
It's gonna be eighteen months worth of time cards, we can't.
No, I'm saying all of the department heads, so we, so we are not. So going out, we need to do them all, if this is gonna be an issue about salary and overtime, we need to look at all of them.
Make another motion, I move to review. All department head time cards. From January two thousand eighteen to present.
Second.
Has been motioned, seconded for the rest of the departments, as suggested, any further discussion? All those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye, unopposed? I would suggest that we start with one department and not try to cram them all into, that's gonna be.
Yeah, we could just start with this one first, I agree, that was a good point, Al Joe, that we don't wanna single out one department.
But the issue is, you know, e- everyone is going to emotionally make this about a person, it's not about a person, it's about a job.
But it looks that way when we make the motion.
But you know what, it's our job to quit making it look that way, because all we have to say is, it's about the position. Why is it so difficult for me to say that Ellsworth County is three times our population, and they only have a part time position for something? And Lincoln County is one third the population, has a full, I'm sorry, that has nothing to do with who it is, that is the structure of our system that needs to be questioned.
You got a good point, but, but people will interpret that way, so when we make the motion for everyone, it looks cleaner.
That's fine.
Like Al Joe said.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
That could have brought up, been brought up in the discussion too, on the motion.
Well, I forgot.
I will um, also put where each of the department heads currently are with their pay, what their, that income pay is at.
What the salary would come out to on that.
And then I'll get that dollar amount, and my understanding is, is that's gonna phase up, so each year it's gonna increase, I don't know. I'm assuming based upon whatever they give for social security costs of living rates, will also be phased into it automatically, but. Um, it's, it's far less than the original, like, forty eight thousand that was, so.
Well, this brings me to my next point of discussion, I think we need to look at what we're doing. Um, with the job description for the highway department, because. You know, it almost seems like it would be better for the county. This, this public works director position, I'm still a little confused about, because a few ca, it seems like a few counties did that a few years ago, I mean, I talked to a couple of those. Counties in the small breakout groups and they're less than five thousand population, but we don't really have public works, I mean, public works. In an urban area is your sewer system, or if you run your own electric wi, like you might have a public works for Lincoln because they have their own electric supply. Yeah, that's more of a public works issue, um, you know, when we did this com- combining thing. We didn't take any money away from the department heads of the other departments, we just gave them a boss, which I'm still kinda confused because they're still doing all of their same duties. Nothing really changed, so the consolidation didn't help the budget, and it didn't really unload anybody's workload. So, you know, it almost seems like if you're going to have that big of a position over top. It needs to be a heavier duty, bulky position, the pay needs to be up, I mean, right now, we're basically, we're supporting two jobs. That have the same essential function, if you read the, the functions under the road and bridge supervisor. A lot of these in the last one, he changed a few of these, but a lot of them, I'd say three quarters of them say assists. So we basically created assistant and assistant to the public works, instead of just having the public works be in charge and then having, you know, a bridge crew foreman. And a, a, a blade route inspector, or, I'm just like making up stuff, but w- we have like a. A hierarchy that looks like this at the top, instead of this, with a row of people that then you delegate jobs to. I mean, the best structure is when you have a decision maker, people, those, all those people could make a little more money to oversee whatever their area is. And the person at the top makes a lot more money to take the brunt of the issues on.
Rear anchoring.
Right, I mean, and it's gonna happen, I mean, this is public.
Since I've come on here, I agree with you, but that, I've never, now, and I understand why they hired Bob Howell back, because he was an expert in the.
On the ground, on the ground.
Doing the work, and and Michael was more of the older manager, but I never really saw, understood what Michael did. That Bob did do different, and I know Mike Hanawick, he's doing what Bob did do, right?
Exactly.
So I, if we hire a new.
Actually, I think he put Jesse in there to do what Bob did.
Well, if we have a who, new road and bridge supervisor, like Bob's job, old job. Does he fit under Michael, and if that's the case, what does Michael do above and beyond what Bob did do, or the new guy, and I agree with that, it's confusing. And I agree with that. It's confusing there to me. And maybe there's an explanation for it, but I don't understand it either.
Well, and, and instead of having, I mean, right now, we have this system where it's like you know, you have, you have all of your employees here on this baseline level and they're all just making whatever they've made because of when they started and how long they've been here, and then according to what position they have. Then you have this little like bridge crew guy that might be a dollar up because there, you're just expecting him to work with the crew traveling. But then you have these uh, these positions that are staggered up in rank, but really don't have any more responsibility. Hands-on responsibility. You know, um, we've discussed how it is necessary to get the paperwork done, but.
Well, Mi- Michael said, remember, two weeks ago that he was working on uh, doing a different organization chart within his department, right? He didn't bring it up today, but in other words, like have a lead over, a lead over the, the bridge crew, and a lead maybe over the grader guys. He's talking that, you know, two week, last week, so.
I mean, this is a typical management structure.
Yeah.
You pay the person the most that's on the top, that's gotta hire and fire and make the, make the calls. Then you have department heads over top of whatever functions you think are necessary. So if you have a whole truck driving crew that schedules where the gravel's going and when, based upon requests from your motor grader operators, then that's one position. If you have another position that's coordinating which culverts are going where, ordering them, having the guys be there, being on site, ha- you know, that's a whole nother position. These four levels underneath one could all make more money if the one at the top wasn't two. Do you see what I'm saying? You don't need two people at the top to perform the same function. You need one person to make those decisions and delegate jobs to each of their next. You know, that's why we make decisions as one board. I mean, I might have my opinion, you have your opinion, he has his opinion. But when you make the decision, it goes directly down to the department head. When we have two department heads running a department, there's no cohesion.
Yeah, I.
And you could pay more to one person if you create that job that then takes on all the responsibility. And if, if they're paid to be there, they're not gonna try to be friends with everyone.
Aljo, what do you think? Since Bob left, what do you think we should do with? Since Michael's kind of in charge now all by himself and he, well, he hired Jesse. What do you think we should do for the future, Aljo? You've been here, know this stuff.
Well, I, I'm interested in how Michael wants to organize his highway department people. I think that, you know, he sees a different system, a better system. I'm all for it. You wanna see what he.
So maybe we, before we even look at hiring a new road superbrid- road and bridge supervisor, we should see what Michael comes up with with his.
I think that, that enters into it.
Yeah, well, that enters into it, yeah. Because I'm, I'm not.
And maybe we do go to grader and truck and, and bridge instead of having one guy, but we've got to be able to coordinate uh graveling. You can't just have a truck driver and the, uh, the, a grader operator. We kinda need somebody that's gonna coordinate it throughout the county. Cause each one of those road grader operators probably wants gravel, you know, and we can't all have gravel at the same time.
Right, but the structure before was that they all called Bob.
And Bob was the one that organized.
But Bob was also organizing where culverts went in and when they went in and, you know, who knows who was ordering them, et cetera, et cetera. That's not a good layering of duties.
We had a lot, he had a lot on his plate. Yes, he did.
Yeah, Bob did a lot, but.
A lot on his plate, and maybe more than he should've paid.
Well, I think he was good. He just kept on wearing.
Well, you can't keep up with that. I mean, no one.
Well, his age and his, his health. No, it's a sad situation, too bad.
We've gone on now till it's gonna be two o'clock here. We have.
Is there a reason that you don't like these meetings to lengthen?
Well, I, I just don't think we need to meet for five or six hours. I find like you're tired.
We have six million dollars to spend and for some reason, you think it can be done in four hours flat every week. I don't understand that.
You know, some commissions only meet every other week.
Well, I, I don't wanna be some commissions. I want to do what's right and it, it takes thorough discussion, which we never had on the last commission that I was on with you.
You can chew on me all you want to. I would move that we pay Ready Mix Industries to clean the grease trap.
I'll second that.
I'm not going to agree to pay overhead costs for a company that owes us rent money, so I, that's where I stand. There's no further discussion. Those in favor vote aye.
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 Opposed? Nay.
Don, do you have that letter from Brandon about his resignation, what he would do for us?
Um, I have it upstairs. Let me look at it.
Are we going to ask Don to have, I'm gonna call Mr. Missouri, call in?
I thought we did.
Well.
No, we didn't determine, is he calling in during a meeting?
Oh, I know. I just said, I, I suggested she call and see if he's interested.
In the com- in the combined position.
Conversation.
Would you be with for that too? I think.
I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm, I'm opposing it.
Now, like you said, how to come up with the money and the dollars out of each department. You had a good point, but I think we oughta get with that guy.
Well, we need to see if he's, yeah.
Because he seemed like he was knowledgeable there and management experience and he could help us out.
The only thing I can see is that he was looking forward to being on a rotation is kind of what I felt that the discussion led to. You know, it, when he applied and it was part-time, it was, wasn't gonna be five days a week, so that gave him long we- weekends, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I would say, this is definitely going to be forty-plus hours.
This would be, yeah, uh, this would be a full-time job, plus, plus. Maybe he doesn't want that.
Now, I mean, the county offers decent leave time. You can always schedule your leave time for a Monday if you want a three-day weekend, et cetera.
Well, we could discuss it with him, all those details. You know, we can't hammer out every little detail.
But I'm gonna say that we are known, Lincoln County is known for putting job offers out there without a pay range, without any expectations or qualifications listed. I mean, we need to get a little more concise, right?
Yeah.
So what I'm proposing is that we look at what we've been paying at the EMS director rate. Create a salary out of that, so that they're exempt from hour, and then you tell them, if it takes you fifty hours that week, I don't care if you stay over six hours.
HR too. No, I agree.
These are your HR duties that must get done by the end of the month. And however you divvy up your time is, is on you. Yes, the end of May, that's my thought.
Yeah, what are we gonna do by then?
Well, this is the position we're working at.
Yeah, but the end of May is ten days from now.
Well, I.
We won't have any, any more directory.
Don, would you be able to call and maybe then let us know what is said by our interviewee? If he's willing to accept. But see, that's why I'm saying, we can't just come to him with a, with no offer. We have to have an offer.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it has to come with a number and details. I, I would not accept a job if someone just called me up and said, hey, we're thinking about combining two jobs. Do you want both of them?
No, it's not what I said. I did not say we would offer him a job. I said we would be interested in knowing whether he would be willing to do something like that. And then I think we need to visit with him about our expectations for HR too.
Well, then let's just ask him to call in because Don can't relay everything that we think. We need to have a conversation with him.
Well, I, I agree, we need to have a conversation with him. But first of all, we need to, he needs to know what that conversation might include.
So let's, we'll have to have a special meeting. Don, would you please contact him and see when he would be able, we could just do it by phone? When he would be able to have an hour discussion with us.
Or if he's even interested in having a discussion with us.
I'll call and determine it.
And I think we should try to do that by the end of this week. If he has a time slot this week that would be available.
Well, Thursday, weren't we supposed to have something with the road control? Did we ever hear anything on that?
Oh, well, that was with Mr. Hay. Well, I haven't heard back. That was.
Well, I think you were supposed to go though. I thought that was a set date. And I, I will be going on Friday, tomorrow and Friday. I cannot, we've got funerals in our.
So ask him if he has Wednesday available.
Yeah, where are you going to pick a third one?
Well, we didn't get a confirmation he was going to.
Oh, yeah.
We, we were choosing a day for ourselves, which was the twenty-second or twenty-third. We went with the twenty-third and I haven't heard back.
Never got back.
Unless I got an email that I didn't open, but that's, that's possible, cause I don't get updates on my phone regularly unless I have wifi.
You don't have a cell phone?
I, I don't, I, I just use the wifi and it'll update on the wifi, but I don't have it updating constantly on my regular plan. There's too many emails and junk for that.
But anyway, uh, on the highway department, I don't know.
Well, what I'm suggesting is we re-look at what the department head label is and what the, what the income level is. And we have very high expectations for that, where we know it's gonna be more than forty hours a week because whatever needs done is gonna fall on that person. We've already heard that this, that the person who's running it now doesn't want more than forty hours. So, you know, if that, if, if that position can be transferred into part of that um bridge crew, highway department supervisory, you know, you're gonna have other positions that maybe it's not the same exact dollar amount, but it's the same ranking. You know, if, if you're scheduling all the gravel and the truck hauling and I'm scheduling the culverts and the bridge crew who cuts trees, et cetera, et cetera, it's easier for us to communicate about what our crew is doing than for everybody on the crew to be calling Bob and saying, where do I go today? Do you see what I'm saying? It's.
So you think we should, well, okay, no, I'm not.
And I think, once you get to that pay cutoff where we don't have to worry about paying the overtime, we can have expectations. I mean, the job functions, a lot of times, this is not forty hours a week. It's fifty or sixty. And that's not uncommon. I think for some reason in Lincoln County, it's the forty-hour whistle blows and everybody drops dead. You know, people don't run their own businesses like that and other county governments don't run it like that either. There has to be an expectation of getting things completed. And, and as far as having this position where ninety percent of it is assisted that and helps do this and da, da, da. I mean, I didn't know we were hiring an assistant. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I think Michael probably assumes we're hiring somebody like Bob, another Bob with that type of job title.
Exactly, which to me does not create.
We gotta determine if that's what we want or not. We, I don't know, that's where we're at, I think.
I haven't seen how it produces more results. I see it as confusing as to who, who calls the shots. I mean, we had an issue. The only, I asked for employee write-ups. There's been one in the entire two years I asked for. And it all had to do with one boss telling someone to do something and the other boss not wanting it done. And that resulted in an employee write-up. So, you know, we can't have this struggle between which position does what. There needs to be the main job and it, and it pays to be in that position. Not just two mediocre-paying supervisory roles. Do you see what I'm saying? David, did you need to talk to us?
Just real quick.
Sure.
Um, pervert's weather. I didn't know if you guys wanted to sign a disaster declaration, have it open in case flooding does happen. Um, Salt Creek, weather service is forecasting Salt Creek to get to twenty-four point one record flood stage level is twenty-four or whatever.
Okay.
Um, Celine County, or I'm sorry, the Celine River here at Lincoln is supposed to crest at thirty-two feet. Um, and that's above flood stage.
Okay.
Um, national weather service in Topeka has issued a flood warning for the Celine River at Teskeet from Tuesday morning to late Friday night. Nine-thirty AM Monday, the stage was twenty-four-four. Flood stage is twenty-five feet. Record flooding is forecast. Impact at twenty-eight point five. Thirtieth Road Bridge going over the Celine River south of Teskeet will be flooded.
Yeah, that's all.
And, and, and that's gonna start.
Have you already been communicating with the highway department about?
I have been talking to Michael. In fact, he's got a load of sand getting ready to go over to Beverly. We're trying to be proactive.
He told us, he was here, he was getting ready for sand.
Yes, and, and we've been um communicating with John Alquist. He's a Beverly Fire Chief. And he's got sandbags over there in the Barnard Fire Station. If we, excuse me, in the Beverly Fire Station, if we have to sandbag. Um, and then again, to the national weather service, I wish ties issued a, the Celine River near Lincoln Tuesday afternoon until Wednesday night at nine forty-five, the rec- the, the stage was nineteen point four on the river. Flood stage is thirty feet. Minor flooding is forecast. Forecast rise above by Tuesday afternoon and continue to rise to near thirty-two feet by early Wednesday morning. And then, um, about Barnard, Salt Creek again. Um, weather service has issued, um, Salt Creek, Barnard, at Barnard at six fifty Monday, the stage was nineteen point three. Flood stage is twenty-one. Forecast rise above flood stage by early Tuesday morning and continue to rise to near twenty-four point one by Wednesday morning.
So do you have a resolution? Does that have to be a resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Um, and, and I don't have one filled out, but I have, I brought a blank one with me and I didn't know.
I don't see why we can't.
Just to be proactive in the state.
We know that.
Yeah.
The state already has an emergency, uh, the emergency operations center is activated for the state.
Don, do you have a resolution number?
What does it say?
Proclamation state of local dis- of a state of local disaster emergency for Lincoln County, Kansas, whereas on this day, the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln, Kansas finds that certain conditions have caused or eminently threaten to cause widespread or severe damage, injury or loss of life or property in disaster proportion in Lincoln County, Kansas. Whereas such conditions have created obstructions which endanger health, safety and welfare of persons and property within the border of Lincoln County, Kansas. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, that the Board of County Commis- Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas under and by virtue of the authority vested in it by KSA nineteen seventy-six um, supposition number, does hereby proclaim that a state of local disaster emergency exists. It is further resolved and proclaimed that the area within the border of Lincoln County, Kansas, covered by this proclamation and resolution is the entire area of the county. Be it further resolved that said board has all rights and or powers to perform such functions as are vested in it by said board and by and through the provisions of the Kansas Emergency Preparedness Act of nineteen seventy-five. It is further resolved and proclaimed that this resolution shall remain in effect for a period of seven days unless terminated earlier or renewed by consent of the governing body.
Okay.
So it is a forewarning. It's not necessarily that it has already happened.
Going to happen, but we already have it in place if.
And it looks like the, all your numbers were declining over the next few days, so now would be the time. Eleven?
We need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to uh prove resolution uh number eleven, a proclamation.
I will second. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, and none opposed. What is today, twenty?
Twenty-five.
It's raining after now. Looks like it on the radar.
It's a big old blob. It's not moving.
They got almost, uh, precautions down there by Teskeet, Beverly, almost to close some of them roads off if they're flooded down, aren't they, out there?
Yeah.
But that's really low there between Beverly and Teskeet.
Mm-hmm. And I was, last year, last year after the heavy rains, they had a big log jam there at the county line on the big cement bridge there at the county line going south. Um, and I was gonna go that way and stop in Beverly and talk with John, the fire chief, and make a lap up through Barnard just to check the water up there. I talked to the city clerk earlier. She said they were okay.
Now, do you coordinate with Ottawa County on this too?
I haven't yet, but.
Maybe you have before.
I, I, I will, yes, for Marie's going to need help.
I need to sign it or I'll go.
Yeah, I, did I do that? Oh, then you better sign two underneath. I thought that, when it said county commission, I thought it went in Lincoln again, so. And I was only on there ten times.
Generic forms.
Yeah.
I'll make a copy of that and then you need the original, right?
Yeah.
Got it.
But it's all official till I sign it.
So, well, yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck in dealing with all that stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. Um. I guess, so. I guess, so for next week, what do we already have scheduled, Don, if you would just?
I, I don't know, um, I don't think anything, cause next week is the evening, maybe.
Oh, the evening, oh, that's right, I'm a week ahead, okay.
It's the evening.
So for June third, we have Sean. We need to, we need to discuss the, the opening for this, uh, road supervisor. I'd put that on the agenda, please. And we will hear from you this week about the HR EMS situation.
Um, and I know that OCCK is on June.
Okay.
Do we wanna do?
Oh, we need to deal with the budget too. Oh, yeah, what do you, you have a suggestion there for something?
Well, should we appoint one of the other, uh, police down there as the interim director when he leaves?
Sure, sure, let's ask them. Do you wanna ask?
Yeah, I don't know who specifically, do you? Opinions on who can do that, huh? Or maybe we don't need an interim director, but somebody has to schedule on stuff, right?
You do have to have somebody.
Yeah.
So I didn't make a copy of this, cause she brought it down while you guys were meeting here today. But here's a EMS director position application. Here's the other two HR positions.
Wait. We don't wanna hand those out in a public meeting, do we?
Well, probably not.
Yeah, let's wait and let's-
Let's go into executive session then, because-
Yes.
Um. Or, well, you can adjourn and I can give it to you, but the one you might want to know-
Do you have a copy for everyone?
Not of that one, cause she just brought it in today during her meeting.
Can I ask her to go and get copies? Do you want, do you wanna just ask Hannah to make? Do you need an original for you?
Yes.
So ask her for three copies, please. And then before we go into executive session, I think we need to create this correspondence for the county hospital. Don, if you would, um, please notify Mr. Granzer that we would like to have him answer questions. So maybe the June third meeting would be appropriate for that. And this is our response within ten days of receiving it, that we would like to do a follow-up with him, because we have questions that need answered about how this budget is structured.
That's fine.
Do you want me to get any specific questions?
Um, I think there are too many to-
Yeah, I don't have any specific questions right now.
Yeah.
I can now ask some tomorrow night at the, uh,
Yeah.
Hospital Board meeting.
I could probably make that.
He may be able to answer some of my questions, uh, which he could, we could still have him come before, so.
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I don't think we can list them all, because a, a lot of them require discussion. I mean, just like the, the calculation in revenue is the thirty percent increase in the one clinic and the fifty percent increase in the other clinic, is that? Is that accounted for as a loss in case it doesn't happen with their, the cash on hand that they have to cover? I mean, I'm not sure what the plan is, if they don't reach those income levels. Do you know what I'm saying there?
Yeah. Well, they just probably make a wild guess on that, because they got two new doctors. You know, you know, how do you know how many people you're gonna get and patients and stuff?
Right. But if you would just send that from the county, Don, I think that satisfies our obligation to have responded within ten days. It's not an approval, it's a request for continuing discussion. And then, oh, and on the third, you also had one of the health insurance companies coming, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will have a full day that day. Oh, and Mr. Grace.
Well, I'm gonna get with, uh, I'll, I'll write up a letter.
I think we need a motion.
Oh, you need a motion?
I mean, I, I, or, or we could at least list it in the minutes as an approval to have, I mean, I think we need to talk about what are the topics you want. I jotted down a few.
Okay.
The rent, interrears.
Yeah, let, let me give me, well, let me write that down.
Where's the copy?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, tell me, yeah, I'll give you some things what you want. And I'll write a letter up and, or an email, and I'll print it out and then I'd email it to him someday, but. The rent, accounts payable maybe, huh? Of course, that's, a lot of the accounts payable is not our business. A lot of it, he owes money to other people, but not really us.
Well, what, the last letter that we received from him said that he was willing to do a, um, an asset sale, but it did not list, no, it was a stock sale. It, 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 it omitted the asset sale conversation. He, the last thing he wrote to us was about doing a stock sale. Um, but we would need to know what the accounts payable balance is, if that was even going to be an option.
Yeah.
And then we wanna talk about which bills-
Yeah, which bill.
He is responsible for operating and maintaining a business in our facility.
Right.
Because we are not operating that business, yet we're paying bills like you guys did today for the grease trap. That's not a repair to the building. I'm not, I'm, I understand why you're doing it, but what I'm saying is that's part of his, in our, in our lease.
That needs to be defined better, yeah.
Right.
Well, there's supposed to be an appendix A to that lease, and I guess there was never one made, right? Which was supposed to list that stuff, if you read that lease. And appendix A was supposed to define his, his responsibilities and our responsibilities.
So write that down, appendix A.
Yeah, maybe we'll make an appendix A.
Right, right.
And, uh, also-
And then I would like to discuss with him his plans to sign chow paperwork to turn over to a management firm, because we were on the phone with Patty Brown from K Dads, who said that it is completely voluntary for an owner to sign the chow paperwork, so-
What kind of paperwork?
It's C-H-O-W, like child dog food, you know?
C-H-O-W, paperwork.
It's a change of ownership.
Okay.
And so, you know, I guess he needs to explain to us what his plans are, because he's requested a buyout from the county. And he has also requested that the county find a buyer for him. Um, but what we're requesting is just change over to a management firm.
Yeah, okay.
So if, you know, if he's requesting a buyout for financial reasons, then he would have to give us a reason that he wouldn't just sign over to get out from under him incurring more debt. Do you understand what I mean by that?
Yeah, kinda.
If, if I'm in debt and I can't make my business work and I want you to buy it, how much does it worth? Versus, I can't run this anymore, I'll sign it over to you.
You gotta know the debt, obviously, like you said, yeah. And what else? Anything else on that? About assisted living, he still has license. He was, he, I talked to him, he said, he was saying we need to promote it more. Well, I said, well, you're managing it, I didn't really say that, I just said, yeah, that'd be fine with me, that I was thinking later. We're, I, I mean, it was, county could assist him, cause it benefits us, though you have nine people in there. We're happier than, than he's happy too. But he was saying just needs to promote it more, and he was wanting maybe some of the rooms painted and stuff. I'm gonna whatever on that, but-
Well, one of the things I haven't said, I did go up to visit the assisted living that day that we had found out by, you know, the letter, and we had found out a couple of days before the meeting. But I went up after the meeting and what I found is that four out of the five people have already chosen a relocation as of like the day that they found out, their families. So I feel like efforts to keep it open need to be planned out, not just immediate for immediate need, because what I'm on, what I understood by going up there and visiting is that four of the residents had already made other plans to go places and the one resident was potentially going to go ahead and move into the other side.
Okay.
So, in other words, if we are gonna pay money to keep it open, we don't even have any residents right now. Or maybe one, do you see what I'm saying?
Well, there could have been three, but he closed it because he said he wasn't making, you know, making enough money to, uh, keep it open.
Well, I can see how three is not a break even number for the staffing.
Well, now you gotta staff twenty-four hours a day, and that, that we used to, that's expensive. And he's paying for, uh, uh, sta- staff, nursing or, uh, agency.
Agency, right.
Which is expensive. No, I understood too, but, but do we oughta figure out what the plan is there, if any? But, but no, these are all his questions, I'll write up some questions we have. That way then he can see when he comes in what to talk about.
Sure.
And I don't blame him for that, he just wanted to come here and we just started randomly talking. He wants to know what to deal, what, you know, specifics.
Yep.
And I'll print this, I'll write a letter, and I'll have you and Aljo review it next week. And then if we like it, we'll go from there.
Okay, that's fine.
Anything else? I guess we gotta look at these, these, uh, apps.
Yes, let's do, do you wanna just take them home?
Be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can just take them home and then, Don, you will let us know if you have something scheduled for Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further business to come before the board? If not, I adjourn until next Tuesday evening at seven PM.
In here, right?
Here, yes, courthouse basement meeting room.
Okay.